The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. And, oops, I haven't been ready, sorry. Um, are you, who's making this statement of public notice?
That's more for informational purposes.
Okay.
Technically, it doesn't need to be made until November 1st.
Okay.
But it's a good point of why we're here tonight.
All right.
It's one of the steps in the process.
Okay. So then we'll turn it to, I'll turn it over to Dr. Michelle Langenfeld for opening remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. As we begin tonight, I just want to share with the Board of Education and others what our budget assumptions were as we move forward with the, with the new budget for 1617. First of all, as we think about our budget, it's very important that our budget reflects the district priorities around academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. In addition, we wanted to make sure that our, any, any reductions we made or needed to adjust, any adjustments in the budget did not directly impact students. So trying to keep anything that might directly impact students away from them as we built the budget. We wanted to make sure that we had a, can remain competitive in the marketplace for our teachers. So Mr. Sarno did put in a placeholder for salary increases for the board to look at. And then also, we wanted to reflect a balanced budget as we move forward into the 1617 school year. As we look to a balanced budget, however, for us, as we brought forward our, each department and looked at our overall budget, it meant that we, in our proposals, needed to cut $8 million out of our proposed budget this year. What we looked at was we had to balance needs in our classrooms. For example, we welcomed 428 new English language students this year to our schools. And so to that end, we needed to provide additional teachers, supports, and resources to address those growing needs. Right now, I think we have a report coming later to the board at the next meeting that will really show you and demonstrate how our English language learner population is increasing here in our district. Obviously, our budget has to reflect meeting the needs of our 40 facilities in the district, many of which are more than 60 to 100 years old, so in that range. So maintenance deferment means increased costs in future years, so we wanted to make sure we budgeted for that. We're seeing increased transportation costs across the district, and we are trying to ensure equity and access. But in doing so, we also have to create, we added the vans last year, and we want to make sure that that's a priority as well, as much as we can, addressing the needs, making sure that children can get to the pathways and programming, and also the transportation of students. A growing number of McKinney-Bento students continues to create some additional dollar needs in transportation. And then I know you're well aware that we bus students to private schools even when our district is not in session at an additional cost. So transportation is an area that we had to increase the budget, and you'll see that. Another area you'll, you'll see that we've talked about is the increased competition for hard-to-fill positions. And if you've been following along in our local newspapers, and I think Gannett ran the series out of Milwaukee, there is increased competition for hard-to-fill positions, and there are signing bonuses the districts across the area and across the state are offering to individuals who, who have the licensure and skills to fill those hard positions. So we put that, took that into account. And finally, one of the areas that increased was something, part of legislation, a couple, I think, the special education shift. We used, we used to pay, if a student who was receiving services for special education opened and rolled out to another district, we paid basically the basic, I can't remember.
The basic open enrollment plus any additional needs and the actual dollars.
Right, and now we're required to pay $12,000 per student, which is significantly higher. I believe our increase in cost or what we budgeted was about a $1 million increase. So those are some things we considered as we moved forward in this particular budget. And at the end of the day, it is a balanced budget, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sarno.
This, this evening is the first of four meetings that, that the budget is discussed. And we will talk about 1516 a little bit because that's a benchmark comparative to what's budgeted for 1617. What's changed? And where are we at with some things? We'll have a public engagement on Monday, October 24th. That's a, a meeting where we will offer the, the same information, it'll be the same exact information to the public for discussion, awareness and discussion. We will then have a public hearing on Tuesday, November 1st, and that's what's been posted. You, if you saw yesterday's, would have been in yesterday's newspaper. And then immediately following that on November 1st, we will have the formal adoption, setting the levy and all that information. The reason that it's important to point that out is that, again, we had the publication yesterday as a requirement that has to be 15 days prior to the meeting date. And so what's interesting is that that had to be all finalized by early last week. Final numbers came out from the Department of Revenue and the Department of Public Instruction on Friday. I would have loved to have included all of that. So what we're looking at, where it's not wrong, they're estimates at this point in time. There, there were, there were the best calculations that we could make with the information that we had. And we're now, it is outdated though. But we need to carry forward this information even through that Tuesday, November 1st budget hearing, the public hearing. So bear with me on that. We will then, after that meeting on November 1st, be documenting what's changed because we're already aware that some things have indeed changed.
Okay.
Our mission statement, it's very important why I'm here, where we're here, what, what we're doing. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. It's very important. And I think a lot of, as Dr. Langenfeld alluded to, and it's not a coincidence that I keep this, but it's the four individual pieces of what, what we're doing and why we're doing it. I keep that with me as a reminder, and I think that this budget, as we went through the process since spring, as we've been developing budgets, hopefully as much as possible, it reflects that. Why we're actually meeting, and again, this is the first of four, and Dr. Warren, this, this discusses that. So state statute 65.90 talks about school districts needing to go through several processes and steps in order to accurately and timely communicate this information. So just a prelude to what we'll be talking about then on November 1st at that formal hearing. But it's good to be aware that this is that first step in engaging the board in that dialogue. One, there are some things that we have to talk about, that we, that we're required to talk about, and this is some things that we like to talk about. That's just important for awareness. One of the things that's important that I believe is, that I like to share each and every year, the health of debt or the health of the school district, it's the bond rating. And it's important because if we look at the revenues and expenditures and balanced budgets or justifications behind why we're adding or pulling from fund balance, that's all important to consider, especially when you're talking about cash flow and that debt rating. So as Dr. Langenfeld alluded to, we do have a balanced general fund budget this evening. We are spending some fund balances, but purposefully, in a sense. So I wanted to point that out is that it's very possible that here within the foreseeable future that we could be going out for more debt. So that's, that fiscal health is very important towards that rating because it would impact interest rates. Talking specifically about debt, this is one of the requirements. The indebtedness of a school district, we're worth about $8 billion is all of our property values. We're not allowed to exceed 10% of that, so we could not exceed $827 million of debt. Currently, we're at about 90, 29, almost $30 million of debt represents 3.62% of our borrowing authority. It's not very much. There's districts that are higher than that and really dependent on that property value to the students and who all we're educating, how dense we are. But in, I don't have comparables, I apologize, but in my experiences, this is a fairly low debt to available debt ratio. And by the way, if you do have any questions at any point, please, please feel free to ask.
Can I, as long as you're on our debt and fund balance, hopefully before the public hearing, I would like, I would like us to present some, some more details that show really how healthy the situation is. And again, and this will come up again as we, as if we, when we go to referendum in April, but 3.62%, that is a very small debt. If it's available, I would like to see what the debt is for the other 10 larger districts in Wisconsin. Because I think it's significantly less. And then if there is an average debt for school district in Wisconsin. I would also, and I've seen these figures in the past, and I don't want to mention what I think they are because I have your guess, but Green Bay's and Brown County's debt is much, much higher than ours. I mean, I've seen figures like 15 to 20%. I would like us to present what the debt is to show how healthy our level of debt is. And then on fund balance, I know in the past, we, we've had what the percentage of our fund balances of our operating budget, and I know there's a decline, so I'd like to show, us to show what the decline is. And then what is the recommended fund balance that our financial advisors have always recommended more than what we've had? And this is, and I think we're decreasing it even more. So I would like, if that's available, Andy, I would like to see those figures the next time.
Please. Would you like that for the 24th or possibly by November 1st?
Um, if you can do it by the 24th, that'd be great. I think it'd be good for the public to see our debt situation and our fund balance situation because they're both very healthy.
Okay, thank you. We do need to disclose on an annual basis through the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So GASB 54 was in, put in legislation several years ago now, but just to disclose that, that fund balance for each fund. General fund, Fund 10, fund balance decreased by $7.7 million. It was a result of facilities improvements, which I hope you're all aware of. Health insurance fund balance was used. Again, we actually separate out our district fund balance as well as because we're self-insured. We have a separate fund balance for health insurance, self-insurance of health insurance. And then a lower anticipated than, 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 lower than anticipated revenues, state and federal revenues. They, they did not come in as planned this past year. I would like to point out though, that as we've addressed the 1617 year, I've been more conservative than we have in the past, and then that's been addressed. So it should not be a concern moving forward. Please.
If I may, Dr. Langenfeld, this is the 7.7-plus million, that's the 8 million you referred to in your opening remarks?
Actually, no. Yes and no.
I guess you mentioned balance the budget, and I see this is your.
That's, that's a piece of it, but it's interplay in terms of.
Yeah, as we look at expenditures last year and then requests that have come in for the current year.
Right, we had to address that.
There were expenses last year that we incurred that as people went through the budgeting process this year, either having asked for it again, having deferred some things from last year that we, we reduced or deferred, is a better term. There, there were some expenses that we did cut as a result of, but that, that was drawing a line in the sand. That $7.7 million were expenditures last year, expenditures over revenues. Our special projects funds, which consists of our gift funds, our Head Start, our Indian education, our special education. Very few of them actually are allowed to carry over fund balance. The only one that does is our gift fund. We saw an increase in fund balance of $1,254, again, through full disclosure. Debt services fund, which are Fund 30s, they're related to when we issued debt and the repayment of that. We did decrease our fund balance by $1.4 million as scheduled, as, as we'd planned through debt repayment. So that was planned for last year. Capital projects funds, which are exactly that, where we work on our facilities and whatnot. It decreased significantly, but significantly by $12.7 million. That was due to wrapping up the 2014 referendum as planned and it's nearing completion. In fact, I'll show in a little bit that Fund 40 balance, fund balance of zero, which means that project is essentially wrapped up. We do need to disclose further, our food service, our Fund 50 increased slightly, $43,000. We didn't invest upon our capital project, or our capital purchases, some equipment that we thought we were going to be buying last year originally. And so the revenues and expenditures, we did not incur those expenses. You will see some of those purchases this year, and we will be continuing to add to fund balance for Fund 50 budgetarily. Our community service fund, which is our Fund 80, began with a fund balance of $803,000 and ended with $1,037,000. That was primarily due to programs that were underspent, delivering services to those students for after-school programs. Added again to fund balance. This year, as we address our 1617 budget, we do have, show a budget deficit of $150,000 to offset that program, program underspending last year, primarily due to one-time type investments and whatnot for those programs. And I will talk about Fund 50 a little bit more.
Just to overturn that last one, in essence, what you're saying is we're not going to try to build a pool of money in Fund 80.
Correct.
Or whatever it is, whatever we raise, we do want to spend it.
Absolutely, yeah. There's no reason in the, in our community service fund to carry over monies from year to year. But when you do have it there, I think it's important to consider how you're spending it, to make sure that you're fiscally responsible in that sense, which I think we'd all agree on that.
We don't.
This is a busy slide, and I apologize for that, but I, I wanted to put it all on one slide. In fact, I did get a call and somebody said, hey, do we disclose this? Absolutely, this has, this is one of the requirements. Our community service fund, what do we do in this fund? We do several programs, we have several programs, after-school academic programming. We have that at various schools, our schools, our students, it's very important. We do have grants, CLC grants, that help supplement that. But at the, the schools that we don't have those CLC grants, we offer programs. We do, we can collect small fees for that program that would offset the levy, but primarily the expense for this program is through the levy. Middle school sports, where we make it available for age-appropriate students of our community. So any, any student that lives within our boundaries that's not currently in another program could technically offer, come and participate in our middle school programs. It's allowable. Our school and community resource officers, the way that this position, these positions are designed is that it's Fund 80 allowable, and it offers supplemental programming to students. The last piece is our board communications, where we take the monthly meetings and whatnot. Those costs are Fund 80 allowable, so we expense that to the community services funds. Important part, nothing's really changed, except for a few dollar amounts and whatnot. Nothing has changed in several years. We've maintained the same levy, dollar amount, and we've maintained the same programs for several years. And we'll go through this a little bit more detail.
Okay, Brenda? I had marked some questions down in the budget book, but I guess I might as well bring them up now with Fund 80?
Sure, sure, would you like to?
Yeah, I, for the next meeting, I would like to see a more specific breakdown, page 47.
Thank you.
More specific break. This is one of the funds that we always get questions about, and I think we should be prepared with some more detail. Program by program, I would like to see either, if it's primarily geared at after-school programs for students, I would like to see statistics on number of students served. Or, or if we can gauge the community impacts of some of these programs. And then I know on the budget book, you mentioned an increased expenditure, expenditures for our school resource officers. What is that? We're not adding a resource officer, it's just salaries?
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Yeah, at Menorca, new school.
Okay, all right, then I think we should detail that, that there is, because of another.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it just, this is one of those that is always going to be questioned. So I think the more answers and data and information we can have at hand, the better.
I called this afternoon with that same request.
Okay, all right, good, you're one step ahead of me.
I know, I agree with you.
So if, if I could just offer Cory Vander Ty's, that whole report we should be able to pull for after-school program that has all the numbers of the students being served, so if we could get that to the board as well.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. Okay, good, thank you.
Good questions.
Any part of your questions, Dr. Vaca, was, you know, $750,000 isn't going to that resource officer, where is it all?
Right.
Where's that increase going?
Yep.
But you're asking where all the money's going, not just that increase.
The breakdown, specific breakdown by program.
Because that's about 9% of our community questions.
Right.
And I, I think it's good.
Good.
And the fact that I know, and I know Melissa has checked this out in the past, that some people have questioned whether it's legal, what we're doing with it. So I mean, you're going to be there, that question may come up again, and we may have to answer that question again.
Let's jump into the actual general fund and the funding mechanism and whatnot. Students drive our revenue. We're, since 1993, we count our students, we're allowed a dollar amount, and then, then we determine where that money comes from. So it really, really stems from students. This is a membership, and again, membership is the number of students residing within our school district boundaries that don't go to curricular school. So it's the number of students that go to public education within our boundaries. This is a history dating back to 07-08 in increase. And again, it did increase by students this, for this current year. There's a three-year average that that plays into, and then we're allowed a dollar amount, and I'll get into that just a little bit. This is an estimate right now. Again, we're still counting even as of the tail end of last week. Some of the students that were, we believe were not going to be returning to our school, they might have come a day in early September, but we haven't seen them since. Some of them are now coming back to school again. We're able to count that, those individuals. So we're, we're fine-tuning that. We will bring a final number by November 1st when they set the levy. So that will all be included.
It just, technical question here, or not technical question, question. If, am I reading the chart right, the last 10 years, we picked up about 2,000 kids in the district?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Although not, not all of them are.
Not all of them are being educated.
Attending school in our district.
And 4K is in there.
But we still picked it.
Right.
Whether they're.
They got to put them somewhere.
Now, we're still taking care of them.
Yeah.
That's about right.
Correct.
That's about right.
And you can see that 4K, much, much like the enrollment or the membership history, you can see that 4K.
And they're saying there's been an argument, I thought, well, you've got 4K, that shouldn't count. Excuse me.
They're still here.
They still have to be somewhere.
They're little people.
They still take up room.
Small, but.
They are little.
Little bodies, I've been around, take up a lot of space.
Yes, they do. They have stuff.
Good point. That dollar amount, and again, it dates back to 93. You can see some of the histories, and that was tied very loosely to some type of CPI slash what the state could afford. You can see very clearly Act 10. In fact, this is the first year I haven't included a slide that says we're still feeling Act 10 because we are financially. So there's a decrease. For a year, we got 50, then we got two years of 75. Really doesn't matter what's happening in 1517 because we haven't seen any increase. The revenue limit has not increased for these last two years, for 1516 and then 1617. So there was no increase included in the state by new budget. So I'm going to take just the, the kind of first formula, is you take the three-year average of our membership, you multiply that by our revenue per student. So our 21,934 students, that's an estimate at this point in time, we get $9,432 per student. By the way, and I think it was asked last year, the top 10 school districts' average revenue limit, we're several hundred dollars below the state. It translates to approximately $19 million. That's important to remember. But that's, that, this is what it is, but a rough approximation before we have some exemptions, $209 million. So where does the money come from? So we've calculated the revenue limit, that $209 million primarily comes from general state aid and property taxes. So if our revenue limit was calculated at $1,000, $660 of it, and that just happens to be around the state average, a little bit lower than that, but we're at $660 of state aid while $340 comes from taxes. So I like to rearrange the funding formula because it's not the revenue limit equals state aid plus property taxes. It's really a second, oh, I skipped ahead. So I apologize. I was, I was just making sure I was, I was right. Let's talk a little bit about the state aid history. And again, you can, you can see the, the last several years and where we had a recession and where that, the state aid is, is gone the last several years. This is primarily due to property values, property values per student, how property-rich, how property-poor school districts are. Again, that's an estimate, the final number was released on Friday. I think it's $200,000 approximately more than what I'd calculated. But this is an estimate at this point in time, but it's important to remember where our general state aid has gone because that shows, it tells a story in itself. Do you have a question, Dr. Langenfeld?
No, I was just thinking about students driving our revenue and that some of our categorical aids are shifting and changing and lowering. Yeah, well, I, I don't, I'm assuming you're going to get into that, so I won't go there.
That's, yeah, that's a story upon itself, yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is difficult, so.
But when, when we look, the property values, they, they really drive our taxes. Again, how property-rich you are, less state aid. The state believes that you're able to generate more taxes, you need less state aid. Property-porer districts, there's more state aid because you need to rely upon less of a property base. Again, as I indicated, the state average is about 60 to 66%. We're right at about 66%. When you just take a look at the revenue limit, there's other things outside of that that then influences it, but that's approximately where we're at. And again, you can see, and the reason that I point this out, the property values, slide 17. Very important because the last several years, our property values have started to creep up. At some point, that's going to start impacting us. Again, because if we're more property-rich or we grow property value faster than the other 420 districts in the state, that means that our slice of the general state aid is going to start getting smaller and smaller. We need to, we need to anticipate what that might look like. I don't know if we can calculate it, but we can at least be aware of it and anticipate that that might start to switch.
Just so I'm clear on that. So if we have, if we become richer in terms of property values, we get less money from, from the state, which means our taxpayers are penalized and they're going to have to be paying more overall? Or, and/or is it because we have more property going up?
Both. You can, you can see increases in property values because of growth, residential, industrial, retail. You can also see that growth, if we ended up seeing large residential partial.
But in essence, the state, uh, version of it. One could argue that they're penalizing us if our property values start to go up, and we do, do a good job within our school district and economy of bringing people in.
Except the individual property taxpayer doesn't necessarily see an increase because you have more people coming in.
We'll talk about that a little bit too.
I'm sorry, wanted to clarify a question, Chip. How are the property, from whom do you get the property value? No person. It's not something you sit down and make up yourself?
From the Department of Revenue. And they, again, they.
State Department of Revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, residential goes up, there might be students in those, and that student growth might actually be faster even though property values are increasing. The student growth might actually hold our value, our property value per student down. Therefore, we might actually get more state aid. It's really kind of where that growth is. I have seen districts that have had residential growth with no kids. Just those types of houses that don't have students living in them, and that, that will actually hurt them. I want to talk about the last funding formula, and I did change the numbering from, from the past. But I want to talk about the actual mil rate or the tax rate, because this is the percentage. the percentage. The levy was a dollar amount, the tax rate is a percent. So when we talk about the taxation rate as a percentage, it's those total, total property taxes or the levy divided by your $8 billion of assessed or equalized value. And that's, again, that's important for several things, and I think Brenda, Dr. Warren, it goes back to your, your question. This rate, we don't differentiate between residential or commercial, or who built or who closed up. It's spread out equally among all taxpayers, all municipalities at one rate. A municipality might have been reassessed recently, one might not, it might not have been reassessed in years. Not likely, but it's possible. And depending on who has grown or shrunk in, in property value by municipality, it would impact municipalities differently. But generally speaking, we have a mil rate for our school district. The changes in property values, and again, as I mentioned this, increases and decreases across the state, that impacts us. Is, is lake homes in, in some of our northern districts goes up or goes down, or is there foreclosures and whatnot, that all impacts us. It's very important to remember that. It's hard to anticipate, but it's important to remember that it does impact us. '16, '17, and this is again, an estimate, that our property values increased by 1.4%. Our levy is going to be increasing by 1.4%. So when you're controlling those two variables, when you're, when you're able to, to have that consistency, the actual taxation rate from '15, '16 to '16, '17 is going to remain flat. Last year, it was $10.16, this year is anticipated to be $10.16. And I want to show that mil rate in a graph over the last several years, is that it's held right around $10.
Later on, if you would, I'd appreciate, I believe we've had the past board members who currently are helping on this. When all is said and done, what does that mean to someone that owns a $100,000 home? You know, how much are they paying on ta, property taxes relative to the school district, and whether that's what the history of that is, or it's a plus or a minus? And I think that, that helps people see what it really is.
Is that something that I could put, put together a matrix for the 24th?
Well, I would say before it gets passed, I, I probably need to know that. And that goes sort of to your point on, on what we're, on actually.
Yeah, of course, it depends upon which of our seven municipalities you live in. I mean, I could, the, based on equalized value of your property, and it's different in Aloe, and Bellevue, and Green Bay, and Scott, and.
Another busy slide, I apologize, I have broken some of these out, so they're a little bit more readable. We, as I indicated, we still have some estimates, we still have some assumptions, some of those were made actual on Friday, but we were not able to include that. So I wanted to make sure that the message was consistent with the information that we had in the paper yesterday. Our membership count is going to be updated by November 1st, that will be brought forward as a final number that evening. Our state aid amount, it was provided on Friday, December 14, or December, October 14, but it has not been updated, but we will update that. We have an estimate of vouchers. I've, I have a placeholder for what we had last year in some new students, there is a placeholder in the current budget, and I'll, and I'll show you exactly where that's at, for, for vouchers. That number, I believe, was released on Friday, I've yet to see it, we should have that information soon. We've inca, included salaries, minor staffing needs, they, they do need to be finalized. As we begin discussions with associations and whatnot, that does need to be finalized. We still do have some staffing needs, there are still some vacancies that we've budgeted. I'd like to point out as well, and as we went through this last year, and as you've always done, budget's a working document, changes will be brought forward for approval, as well as a formal amendment at some point. So this, this is not a, a static document, it will, it will evolve over time, this needs change and whatnot. Let's talk a little bit about what, what's in the budget book and some, some of the information in front of you tonight. The '16, '17 budget proposal, the, the general fund is balanced, that, that's in front of you, and we can see that as we look at the budget book. All identified expenses are included, there, there's nothing that, from what we are able to anticipate and work through as an administrative team to bring this forward to both you, the community, everything what we've identified has been included. Staffing, both the number as well as a placeholder, as Dr. Langenfeld alluded to, we've got a placeholder for increases in that, everything is there budgeted. The membership count, that will be updated for November 1st, the general state aid will be updated for November 1st, and the actual voucher information's going to be updated for November 1st. That will all be updated in the near future. The levy, or the dollar amount, is estimated to raise approximately 1.4%. The mil rate or the percentage text will, is estimated to remain flat at $10.16. Again, I'll mention this, because this is very important, we could probably have a whole discussion about the funding formula, but the, no increase was allowed for the state budget, no increase in the revenue limit. It starts to compromise not just our district, but other districts. In fact, today, I got an email, every day, I'm getting an article, or an email from articles across the state. And I think there's two or three that talked about operational referendums, because now is when schools are going to be promoting that, or just saying, "Please vote." But a couple of them said, "This is the new normal for Wisconsin schools," and it is. So no increases in the revenue limit, that, if, if that is the new norm, and as we work into sixteen, or seventeen, eighteen, that's my last point, that 17, 18 budget process has to begin shortly, because we don't know, and we have to plan for the unknown. We don't know what it's going to look like, and we have to anticipate that, come up with some scenarios, and start addressing that now.
To that point, Mr. Black, do you have any sense of when the next state budget will be held?
Well, the governor usually gives his state of the state sometime in late January. I think the new legislature takes, seated like the 10th or something, and the governor usually releases his budget like late February, and then the Joint Finance Committee, March and April, has a series of hearings around the state, so we'll know probably by late February. The governor has said he wants more funding for K-12 public education, but we have to wait and see what format takes. Because there's some other, and I'll go onto them later this evening in my legislative report, but there's some other danger signs out there with legislation and other things that may come up, so, late February.
Thank you. Before we get into the budget book, and again, I'll, I'll share as well, and this was made available, and just a little bit of a summary document with the four graphs that we had, the notice of the budget hearing is included in there, and we'll go over the budget document and take a look at that a little bit as well, but I wanted to make sure something was available. Are there any other questions at this time that I can either answer now if I have the answer, otherwise make sure I document and bring forward at a future point? Thank you for that.
I do have a book here.
Yes, absolutely, yep, let's, let's dive in.
All right, so, in the past, what we've done is sort of go by section and see, see if board members have questions. So the first section is, is on the general fund, and takes us to quite a ways in page 15. So.
Can I bring up something before we get to the general fund? I went back to last year's budget book, and we had this as a front of the fact sheet. I think we, because I think if somebody picks this up or not that familiar, there's a lot of statistics in here, but it doesn't tell people how many students we have, how many staff, how many schools, what programs we have, what our demographics is of our school district. I think we should do this again. I think it's just very helpful, really gives a capsule of what our school district is.
Is that doable, Ray?
Or I think you probably did this.
I just didn't have time to update it.
Yeah, but if, yeah, if we would have this for next week, I think that, that would be helpful.
All right, so are there questions on, we'll just start five, page five and six?
I have one on six.
Okay.
The increase in Title I aid, is that based on the number of students or schools that we add Title I school, this, I think we did? Is that, is that why we have the increase went from 6.3 million to 8.9 million?
Some was carryover, but maybe Nancy, if, if you would join us? Because it is significant, and it has been really helpful to address needs in our buildings.
Yes, some of this is carryover. And as you, if we recall, last year, Washington Middle School was a Title I school, and they did not expend all of their funds, so that rolls over into the Title I overall budget, and is carried over, and then dispersed the following year. So that's a large amount. Also, we did receive additional funds from the Department of Public Instruction for our overall Title I budget, and I believe I heard you ask if that's a increase of students. It's, we kind of surprised ourselves that we received it, they have a formula they use, and we did receive an increase of Title I funding.
Now, why wouldn't a school use all its Title I funds?
For various reasons. Employees can only take on so much new, and we also have to be very careful that we don't create a cliff, so that if we were to expand and hire employees to fill all those funds, and then the funding is cut, we still have all of the employees. So it's, it's a management piece. We did, and I know that they did purchase, a lot of resources, literacy and math resources for their bookrooms and for their interventions, and then they did increase some staffing that fell underneath those allocations, under Title I, that they were absorbed in the district budget this past year, or this year.
And that was our first year as Title I, sort of onboard quickly is difficult, too, I would assume.
Very difficult, because we hadn't, we really, although we had been watching the numbers for Title I and for our, our middle school and our high schools, it kind of caught us by surprise, there was no way of predicting it, and so when they did qualify at that 75%, then we must service them. And so it did knock a couple elementary schools off, because they come in rank order, highest poverty, so they do come in rank order. And then, when, there are several different formulas a district can use, three different formulas a district can use to allocate their, or distribute their funds in the district. And when we changed our distribution to be grade span, and just to meet a certain population of students, then it, then the middle schools and high schools are not in the formula, then we service all elementary schools, or as many as we can, within our poverty range.
Now, for Title I, doesn't a school have to include its entire attendance area, including students who attend a private school? Because I know I had a principal complain to me once that her school didn't meet the Title I cutoff, even though her school did, but there was a religious school in her attendance area that brought the numbers down, so her school didn't get Title I funding. That's correct?
We do have, there, we do have to service the private schools in the attendance areas. Yes, that is true.
That's not quite right. But, but, what, I think what you're, if I'm not mistaken, if, if the student was one of, I mean, could be counted as one of our students.
Yes.
Because they live in our attendance area, they chose to go to a private school, then do they factor into the overall number of students that would qualify that school to be a title school?
I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, my question is, is let's say a school is at 75%, and they've got one or two private or religious schools in that attendance area, and their poverty rate is 20%, and so that brings it down, and so they may not get Title I funding because of the overall attendance area.
It could, but I would have to look further into all of our schools and the private schools that fall within their attendance area, to know whether or not that that actually did happen in, in one of our school attendance areas. I don't want to misspeak on that, but I certainly can find that answer out for you.
I mean, this was a number of years ago, where one of our schools didn't qualify, they make, I mean, still, I think they still don't qualify.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? If, if there was one of our schools right next door to a private school?
Yep.
If there's a student that goes to a different, in a, in a different school attendance boundary, that student does not count towards that private, there's not a direct link, we count those students in their own attendance.
Yes, but we still service them.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't, having it right next door does not, does, it does not really burden those two schools.
But if the neighborhood children who go to the private school, they, they're included in the title school count. In other words, if I'm figuring out the neighborhood, and if they qualify, those children, even though they don't attend that school, would be in the count, and I think that's what you're talking about.
That is correct. So then you get your percentage of public and percentage of private schools within that targeted area, within that boundary for those schools.
Just, I'm starting, I'm still not. Do you add up the kids in public school and private slash parochial school, the total number of kids together, and then the percentage of, the total number of kids that have economic need? Is that the percentage you used?
Yes, the students' economic need is the percent you use.
With, with both schools, the total population added together?
That's correct, and every student.
So that's back to your original question, waters it down.
All right, so, so Annie Jackson is close to Holy Family School.
Okay.
So you don't, but because Holy Family School would have been in Annie Jackson's attendance area, that's not relevant, is it?
No.
But the, but the fact that, the fact that you probably have a higher percentage of Annie Jackson kids maybe going to Holy Family because it's close, and not very many, not as many MacArthur kids going to Holy Family, is that what we're talking about? Not, not that there's, like you were saying, and not that there's something magical about, oops, if a private school happens to be in the attendance area, then we want them all in as one.
No.
It's not like that. But, but if you live close to a parochial school, maybe you're more likely to go to one. Yeah? So, plus, I would imagine, if you're, if a school isn't close for Title I, this isn't even going to be an issue, but if you're on the, right, if you're on the bubble, the fact that 20 of your kids versus eight of your kids go to, potential kids go to private school, that could flip it, right?
It, it could, you mean, you take your overall count of all the students in that servicing area, both public and private.
So if you weren't close, it wouldn't, wouldn't matter. But these would be for close, close situations, yeah. You wouldn't have a school that's 80% free and reduced, and just because a parochial school happened to be in there, we just wipe the, it's not like that.
It's not like that.
Okay.
A question, if I may, stone this topic, of the carryover from Washington.
Yes.
Does that have to be spent in Washington, or it could go to other Title I schools?
It goes back into the general Title I budget in our carryover, and so we can carry over up to 15%. We tried to spend all of our money, but we also want to make sure that we have a cushion in case of a rainy day, such as new students move into the district, and Title I schools that we have to provide additional services for. So that, that all gets rolled over into our carryover, and then is factored in and redistributed the following year amongst all of the qualifying schools.
And is Washington still Title I? No.
It is not.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Qualifies, so the money can't be spent.
Yeah, they're not.
Because if it no longer qualifies for Title I, the money can't, cannot be spent there.
That is exactly right.
Hey, do you have a question, Chris?
Yes, it may have been addressed before, but I didn't catch it. Under state resources, the first two, as we can see there, the second one, state aid general has not changed, and that, that's where we've been taken a hit big time. But the, right above it, state aid's categorical, I see about a $2 million-plus increase. Maybe you could address where that, that increase is coming from?
Yeah. Yeah, that state categorical aid, the $2 million increase. Last year, we were allowed a stipend, so no revenue limit increase. However, last year and this year, we're allowed stipends. Last year was a $150 stipend. This is your, this year is a $250 stipend. So that increase that you're seeing is primarily due to that additional stipend, $100.
Right. I think what-
Is that for, $250 for all students?
Across the whole state. It's not like what we typically think of as categorical aid. It's, no, it's not tied to anything.
Thank you.
Great, seven and eight.
On seven, under expenditures instruction, the last item, other special needs, it went from 13.8 to 17.4. What does that cover?
Yeah, this is now where we're, we're, we've moved some things around. Because the way that we'd been accounting for things, the whole accounting structure between the fund, the location, the project, the function, we're redoing some things. We're using the other special needs, this 170000 a lot more. So we started moving some special projects in there. Anything that, so as you look above, and I apologize that I don't have specifics, but above, we've shifted some money out of the other, let's say, elementary or secondary instruction, maybe even some vocational curriculum into, so as an example, the vocational curriculum dropped by $400,000. I know that that's a $400,000 increase where we've put it now into the special needs. So it's just a different way of accounting. And I can come up with some specifics there if you'd like. It's, we're increasing it because of a better use, a better way to account for it. Those are individual programs and that we can run a report and specify what exactly is there. So those, that is not an add. It's a shift, a shift from other areas.
Katie?
On page eight, source number 297, student fines for $15,000. Remind me, what, how are we assessing these fines? What are these from?
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't want to make light of $15,000 of library penalties, but it's, it's things that are broken. It's things that, they're literally things that, where students are either not behaving or not doing what we would like them to do, or sometimes fines associated with that.
Library fines, science equipment breakage.
Yeah.
Anything else? Computer breakage, that was their fault.
Textbooks, I mean, missing textbooks.
Lost textbooks, yeah, exactly.
So all those things are, except for the library fine, a lot of those things are not really what typically you would think of as their replacements or repairs.
Right, okay. Okay, we're on nine. And 10?
I have 10.
Go ahead, Mike.
When we, the increase in salaries and benefits, 6.7 million. I think if the average person looked at that and said, boy, you really gave your staff a big raise. I know there's a lot of additional staff. I would like to see us break down how many additional staff by category. So it doesn't look like this is some huge salary and benefit increase for existing staff.
Mr. Black, is that, I don't have that sheet from last year. Is that one of the figures that might be in there? The cover, the cover sheet that you brought up?
Oh, oh, um.
I mean, it might be a question.
No, I don't think we had, no. I don't think we had additional staff on here. We just had some totals. I know, for example, when we had, you know, add at the last minute, a couple hundred additional ESL students, obviously that, that's an expense and you have to add staff. That's unanticipated, so. And we've had certain needs in certain schools and some additional schools. So if we could break out that, I think that would be helpful.
Is that, is that doable in a week?
I will need to defer Gina, I know she's not here. I think Randy's in the back. I've got it logged and we'll work with them. The other thing to keep in mind too is that this isn't just additional staff. It's increases in compensation and benefits. So, any, anything that would have increased, so steps, loans, any wage increases, that's all been captured in the dollar.
Yeah, it does reflect though, and we know that we've added. I mean, we budgeted to add several, close to 2 million.
Correct.
Out of curiosity, page nine, other revenue. What are some things in other revenue?
Oh, boy.
I need to bring it back next week.
Boy, I'd have to look, yeah, $375,000. Would it be okay if I brought that?
Bring it back next week.
Yes, thank you.
11, 12? I have a question on 11. There's a significant increase, object 20117, security specialist salaries. I'm just wondering-
Those are actually stu-
Who that is.
Yeah, as weird as this is coded, and again, we've been redoing some of this. Last year, we changed, I think we had it as, undifferentiated instruction was a title. You said, what's an undifferentiated instruction? I said, oh, it's elementaries. He said, well, why don't you change it to that? This, this title, so the security specialist salaries, they're actually student learning advocates that are in there now.
Oh, that, that have been in our district but weren't in this line item.
I apologize, I don't know if we've added students.
We have.
But, but they're coded under the security specialist salaries. And I said, boy, why don't we change that title? Because it's more than just security specialists.
Yeah.
What's, what's more appropriate? So that's something that we've already got earmarked to change. I knew that, I've, I've got a note here.
Because I asked the same thing.
So some, some of this is a shift and some is new people.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I, I believe, and it's not, it's not a school learning advocate, it's a student support advocate. Is that right? I'm looking at Mr. Hall and does that sound, I'm thinking at Franklin, they have a student learning advocate and a student support advocate. They would be both-
Both in there?
Yeah. So I think to go back and double check, but that's what I'm thinking.
And then who are the parent assistants? Were you going to ask that, Julie?
Yeah, boy, I forget their names.
Well, not their names. I mean, there's a, there's a line item, 20125, parent assistant salaries. And that one went up significantly also. But I'm questioning, I'm wondering, what position is that, parent assistant?
That is-
Oh, those are Title I?
Yeah.
And we just added people as to why that number went up?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
That's what's interesting.
Oh, extended persons time, okay.
That's what's interesting about this information is right now, we're looking at all the objects, which are the what? It's a salary, it's a benefit, it's a purchase service. And it tells a story, don't get me wrong. And then we're going to look at one of the following pages and it's going to start breaking it down by function, which is really the who. It's science, it's social studies, it's staff development. But they are two separate documents and looking at them together, it tells a different story because it's, it's hard to tell from time to time and say, boy, why did that go by $50,000? Without knowing that granular level of detail. So, yeah, but thank, thank you for working through it.
So we're on 11, 12, still any questions, Mike?
11, 200341, I think I bring this up every year. It says student travel, 6.4 million. Students traveling all over the country, that student bus.
Transportation.
Transportation.
I will, I will change that.
Switch that, so.
I know, it sounds very glamorous.
Yeah, it's a whole, they're sending them all over the place.
Yeah, we are, right, to their schools.
And then-
But does that, does that include to athletic events, to competitions?
That's everything.
Everything that's related to that object.
It's transportation.
Student transportation, yeah.
And then further down, 200382, payment to other Wisconsin districts. Is that just open enrollment?
That's open enrollment.
Now, is, I think you had mentioned before, where do we list vouchers? Although, do we not list it because it goes directly from the state to the private schools? So we don't list it anywhere?
Yep, good question. That's two line items right below it. So last year, we had payments of 1.182 million. This year, I'm estimating 1.575.
That's voucher.
That's, that's vouchers. And it's an estimate at this point in time. But the one right above it is open enrollment only. That includes the way that we need to account for special education open enrollment now. And then any new students.
So you have special ed in there?
Can we put vouchers and parentheses there just so people looking at, oh, look at that. You know, $2 million for vouchers. I think people need to see that.
So if I'm looking at that same number around payments to other districts, so that, okay, that would explain why it jumped so much. Because the numbers didn't jump that much. It would be the same student, just a lot more money for that same student that had been out for a lot less.
Yep.
But it, it did jump some.
150 students? That's an estimate right now.
Yeah. And then on top of it, the special ed?
The special ed piece and then as well, the dollar amount per voucher went up by 2%. So it was at $6,600, now it's at $6,700, so.
No, I was referring to open enrollment.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep. Special ed, more students.
And higher increase, okay.
Can I ask about 20390, the interfund payments?
Yep.
Is that something that is, that only, that, why is there a zero balance for the last two years? But then, if we go back to 2014, is that something that comes up every?
Yep, I had, I had a note on my previous, my, my draft document. I'll get back to you on that. I, I have, I'm forgetting what it was right off the top.
Are you thinking it comes up every third year or something?
Chris?
If I may, I don't know whether I need it now, but Sumit made an interesting comment in the introduction. That we do pay for transportation to public, private schools in the area. That's on the public dime. And when their schedule does not match ours, it's costing more money. I would like to know what that, that figure is. And again, I don't know whether I need it for this document now. But I would like that to come out eventually so people know what the private parochial schools are costing us by not following our schedule. Or not costing us, costing tax.
Wisconsin Association of School Board has been fighting for years to get those calendars aligned so it doesn't cost public schools extra. And the legislature has not listened to that request.
I'll see if I can estimate that, I'll look at transportation.
Moving on, 13, 14?
The, on 13, on 200838, transfer to non-referendum debt fund, 5 million to 13 million. Is that what we, you had talked about before?
With the energy efficiency exemptions.
There's an energy efficiency exemption here?
Okay, and then the last page, 15, in the general fund? All right, moving on, special revenue trust fund?
I'm sorry, could we go back, if I may? Page 15, other special needs. I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, that was, I, I think it was on page?
It was one of page 15, at the top there.
Oh, that's the one I brought up where you are changing categories?
Yeah. So it's where we're differentiating some special, special programs that we're offering to students. And again, I can get a list if you'd like of the different programs that we're putting in that function now.
Well, it's a big dollar amount under other, someplace maybe something line or something, say what it is.
All right, under special revenue trust fund, any questions there? Can you give an example of what's in here?
Sure. If a business donates $1,000 to a school for a purpose, it's recorded in the gift fund. And the purpose behind having this separate from the general fund is that this money carries over with the school. If we donate $1,000 to the district, that just goes into the revenues. And if we don't spend it, it gets rolled into fund balance. With these schools having a gift fund, Fund 21, it keeps their, their, any activity that they have separate.
Do we have any staff under this?
There is a little bit of staff.
Okay, but not much.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And those are, I mean, the staff is contingent on them raising the money every year to pay, yeah, okay. 1920, we're, no other questions on that one? Indian Education Fund? Any questions? Special Education Fund? I have one question on the maintenance of effort. If, when that would hurt us, I mean, because if we have the same type of special ed students that have the same needs year after year after year, we would spend the same amount of money because we're, we're providing them with what they need. But if we had 10, I don't know, just throwing out a number. If we had 20 very, very expensive, high, high need special education students that next year, you know, graduated or were gone and we didn't replace them with anybody, then we would be having to pay as if we had those, those high, high needs special education students still in our district and we would disperse that money to the rest of the special education students that are-
Good question.
Left, how does that, I don't quite understand how that works.
Yep, great question. Maintenance of effort, I equate to the high jump. You don't lower the bar on the high jump until the last athlete is done jumping and declared the winner. With maintenance of effort, the only time that you're allowed to bring the bar down is if you have staff that have changed. You had a veteran teacher making $70,000 and you replaced him with a $50,000 or $40,000. Or you have students leave. And those are called exceptions.
Oh, okay, so there are exceptions.
Where the bar, the bar slowly goes up. Because even with those same staff and same students, even if we're giving a little bit of a raise to, to staff, the bar is going to continue to go up even if the population of students served was the same. So, yeah, exceptions are the only time. And we do look at them every year. So, and any, any point that you can get that bar down, regardless of what intent is, you ask for them.
I think your exceptions are primarily your very high cost students. Your 800, 80 to $100,000 students, you can get exemptions for them, can't you? I think that's my understanding of maintenance of effort.
Yeah, you wouldn't say, okay, student A has speech and language this year three times a week at 15 minutes and next year it's only two times a week or 15. You're not going to write an exception for that. But a one-to-one aid or some special transportation or some things like that, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
But, but if I follow it right, you get, you get the money a year after the fact, right? Reimbursement on these?
We get categorical aid. So we, we're receiving this year categorical aid and that's one of the revenues coming in based on what we spent last year.
Correct, so if those quote-unquote 10 kids weren't here this year, when did we ask for that bar to be lowered, I guess?
Yeah, we, we asked for the bar to be lowered between last year and this year. So our maintenance of effort, if those 10 students graduated, 10 high-cost students left, the bar would be lowered from last year to this year. And then technically, we wouldn't have to spend the money this year. Now, the students were here last year, they were expensive. We would receive aid, categorical aid, this year for those students' expenses from last year. But maintenance of effort and aid are two, I mean, it's all those, that population of students, but, yeah, two different things.
You're not spending money you don't need to spend. And I, this wouldn't be a problem if the feds gave us the money they promised. They, when they set up ESEA or the, they set up special ed, they promised 40% funding and the feds are, what is it, 11 or 12% now? So if they gave us all the money they want, maintenance of effort wouldn't be that big of a problem. But it is because we have to fill in the gaps.
Any other questions on the special education fund? All right, then we have the Head Start Program Fund. Debt Service Fund.
The only thing I want to point out on page, debt service. Oh, no, I'll wait for the capital projects, I'm sorry.
Oh, going back to 29, again, the student travel listing on 200341, that should also say busing. Because we have it broken out here also for special ed.
Busing or transportation?
It wants to, it wants to travel, and it should be busing.
I'll, I'll get that changed in our financial software.
Nothing in Head Start? And, oh, no, we're in debt service, sorry. Capital Projects Fund? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, on page 39, I just wanted to show that bottom right number. So this is where we're wrapping up a lot of our projects now. But the, the- is where we're wrapping up a lot of our projects now. But the, the, the one asterisk I'd assigned to it is that fifteen million dollar number, so that's what was approved to the Debt Service for Energy Efficiency Projects. If we don't, which we won't spend all fifteen million dollars, that amount would carry over.
Into the fund balance.
Yep, I, I really wanted to show we're wrapping up those referendum projects and some of the other facilities projects, but, but I, I don't, I don't anticipate we're going to spend, we might spend a million of the fifteen, which we'd carry over that balance to next year. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Food Service Fund. And then the Trust Fund, Community Service Fund.
And I will get that break off.
Okay, that'll be great. And then the Tax Levy Comparison, is there any questions on the chart at the very end, page fifteen? All right, then I would entertain them, I would, actually, any other questions before we entertain the motion? Right, I would entertain the motion then?
I would move, are we considering a little tweaking like the travel to transportation as a modification?
No, I, I think only if we change the figures, not the categories.
That being said, I would move that the twenty sixteen seventeen budget as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Janch.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Lecca.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carrie, six, zero. And I want to thank you for all your work, and I know this isn't just you, it's many, many people that spend a lot of time putting the budget together. So, and I can, I think speak for the board that we're happy it's a balanced budget and, and it really reflects the priorities that we have for our students and also reflects the work that we've all done throughout this year in terms of making budgetary decisions. So, thank you. And we have, just to confirm once again, we have our public engagement session, which will be October twenty-fourth at five-thirty. And then the public hearing, followed by the special board meeting to adopt the budget, will be on Tuesday, November first at five-thirty. And with that, I'd entertain the motion for adjourn, to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will take a break and start our regular board meeting at five-thirty.
Welcome.
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next I'd ask Julie to read our mission statement.
Yes, we educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Julie. Next is our open forum. This is a chance for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, we will then, oh, oh, okay. Let me just, hang on just a minute. We, we do ask that you fill out a form, but you can speak and, and you'll fill out the form afterwards, okay? And prior to starting your comments, come on, prior to starting your comments, please provide your name, address, and any other contact information. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits the board from discussing matters brought before, brought during the public participation period of the meeting agenda. If the board would want any additional or clarifying information from you, a member of the administration will be in contact with you to follow up on behalf of the board. So go ahead and have a seat, and you, and you may, you may start. Thanks.
My name is Timothy Waterman. I live at one six four six B S Lane. It's in Green Bay over on the east side. I have just one thing, maybe if not for clarification purposes or just to bring some of the attention, with regards to I E Ps. I only have personal involvement because my son is. And while I looked online, I couldn't find anything that was in place. More specific is transitioning from one grade, one set to the next, elementary to middle school, and so on and so forth. What I'm looking for is either guidance or hopefully some input from the board. And is it possible, if it's not to make it mandatory, that's both the incoming and the outgoing schools? Like, my son transitioned from elementary to middle school, and his middle school was not, was not there. They weren't, to them, and I'm going off word, and I got no reason to do otherwise, they weren't there, they weren't invited to it. Two days into the school year, myself and his mom are sitting down for an I P meeting with his middle school, and we had to make a change to his schedule already, you know, a week, it was actually coming into effect a week in school year. So I was just looking, and I don't know if it would have prevented it or not, but if it could just be such for both the child's elementary school and middle school, and then vice versa, you know, going transitioning from middle to high school if need to be, if they could all be present, you know, where the special ed department would be present for both outgoing and incoming schools.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Mr. Waterman, our, our executive director for special ed is here, and I'm sure she'd be glad to talk to you right now, when you're finished, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, not at all.
Okay, I'll start with that.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good. And then, yeah, let us know if, after you talk to her, if you have other questions, but she should be able to answer your questions.
Absolutely, I do appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
She's standing up right in the back.
And running from the room so quick.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board? Seeing none, I'll move to roll call. Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
Lecca?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Janch?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Sinclair?
Here.
Also, we are also joined at the table to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have our intercity student council president, Grace Sinclair, who comes from Preble High School. And we may be joined later by Connor Figgins from John Dewey Academy. And also, at the end of the table is Sandy Heller, who's our board secretary. Next, I would entertain a motion for approval of the following minutes: regular board meeting, September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen; special board meeting, September twenty-second and September twenty-sixth; special board meeting, closed session, October third, two thousand sixteen. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Mike Lecca.
Thank you, Brenda. Our monitoring report this evening will be revolving our own English-language learners. And John Magus and Julie Seifelt will be joining us, and I see there is other E L L staff, and I will let them do the introductions, or if there's anyone else that would be joining them at the table. So John and Julie, want to come forward? And Gwen Stamp, Scramp is also with us.
Thank you for having us, and thanks, thanks to the team as well for all the preparation that you've put in. So we have Julie and Gwen, of course, and Julie, would you like to be here?
Sure. Sitting behind me are people who actually do the work. So I have Toni Lucia, Claudia Orr, Melinda, Melo Nusa, she's from Powell, Leanne Wasters, Jennifer Tremblay, Stephanie Delph.
Welcome, thank you all for being here.
And we're excited to share the information in our report tonight. I think it's really informative, and then it gives us direction for further changes and further reflection as a district and as a department. So I'll just go through the, the reports here. Basically, our objectives for tonight were to increase awareness around some recent changes in demographics that we've had, as well as to address those needs. We also want to provide a brief interview overview of the programming we have, both in our E S L programming and our bilingual programming, and also to share the results, sorry, also to share the results of the E L L programming evaluation and other measures. So those are a couple of the pieces. We also want to demonstrate a deeper level of understanding about the monitoring that the department has put together and is using, because we're, I think that we're piloting some practices that are really beneficial to our department as well as our learners, and discuss our next steps for E S L and bilingual programming. So, basically, if we think about our district priorities, of our four, four main priority areas, academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce, the monitoring report hits upon all those areas, particularly the first three. If we think about academic excellence, we need academic excellence for all of our learners, and it's important that we think of the needs of our, our second-language learners and what, what we can do to best meet their needs. Engagement is critical for all of our learners, and using best research-based practices for meeting the needs of our second-language learners is critical to what we do. And there is also a lot of reflection in our evaluation as far as things we can do to, to make further improvements. If we think about personalized pathways, there are some suggestions that we have moving forward that I believe will be a great benefit to our bilingual students and the community at large as we move forward as well. And now Julie will explain a bit about our terminology, because like every other department area, E L L, E S L, E L, depending on how you want to use the acronym, has many different acronyms.
We have a lot of acronyms, and Kate, you have taught, you have taught me well.
And I also appreciate you sending us the PowerPoint, because I like to be able to follow it and make eye contact with the presenters, that's helpful.
So we hear E L L, and that refers to the student, an English-language learner. And not to confuse you, but the federal government is now forward with E L. The state of Wisconsin has not moved there, but in the future, you will be hearing about E Ls, an English learner. So for right now, we're sticking with E L L, English Language Learner, and you will be hearing that a lot tonight. You will be hearing E L P, the English Language Proficiency Level, and that is a determination of levels one through six. And which, if you have an E L P level of one through five, those are the students that we actually serve. And a level six student is considered a reclassified or an exited student. And once a student reaches a level six, we are required by the federal government to monitor them for two years. So they are still being monitored for two years once they exit. Gwen's going to be talking when she gives her portion about L one and L two, and that's basically language. So the L one is your native language, and L two always refers to English. So those are some of the, the terms that we're going to be using tonight, but if there's an acronym that we slip, please, please let us know when we'll stop and explain it.
Good.
So, a little bit about our population changes that we've seen in the last five years. So I think the big aha when we look at this is, number one, the sheer number of students that have grown. So if you look at the proficiency levels one through five, remember, those are the students that we actually are serving. From two thousand twelve, thirteen, we started with four thousand students. This year, we are at four thousand five hundred sixty-seven. I think the, the big thing to point out is the difference from two thousand fifteen, sixteen to this school year, we have increased four hundred students. And those are the third Friday count numbers that we report to the state every year. So we saw a huge increase in the number of English-language learners this school year. Wanted to also show the level sixes, the exited students who are in our district. So you can see right now, we have close to one thousand nine hundred students who have actually exited the E L L program. They are not receiving services. Now, some of those are still being monitored for that two years. But overall, the total population, if we count all students, those that are being served and those that are former, we have almost six thousand five hundred students in the Green Bay district, and that is about thirty-one percent of our total population. So, yes.
May I ask questions as we go?
Sure, go ahead, Chris.
Couple, if I, if I may. The, the level six in a given year or so, for this, this school year, eighteen fifty-nine, does that actually include the youngsters that were just dismissed at the end of last year plus the following?
Correct.
Previous year?
Yes. Once, the level six is the highest level that a student can reach. So if you reach a level six in sixth grade throughout your career here in Green Bay until you graduate, you will be a level six.
So you're still in level six?
You are still a level six.
I mean, we keep, I mean, before I heard you keep track of for two years.
For two years.
Now you're telling me through their entire career.
We have to monitor them. Where we have to fill out paperwork on them, that's what monitoring means.
So on, on, well, monitoring, a lot of things, but twenty sixteen seventeen eighteen fifty-nine could include kids that are seniors now or?
Correct.
Or in third grade that were here in the program for two years, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
Just as a, a follow-up, and I'm not sure, I saw it in the slides, and I have to remember now. I was provided a slide that I used actually in another environment that showed that we also not only have an increase in numbers, but a shift in the levels that students are entering the district as well. And so that makes a difference in terms of needs and resources being addressed.
Could you say it a little louder, please, I'm sorry?
I was just saying, we see a shift in the levels that we have in the student population as well, with more students coming in or more students being serviced in level one.
Okay.
And that's, and, and talking with, I think we have a number of increased students, and correct me if I'm wrong, at level, lower levels one and two in our high schools, which is, which is something that we've not always had. So.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up, Michelle, because that, I have a note here on my, I might as well bring it up now. For, I mean, I don't, you don't need it right now. Can you break down the one through five students by category? To Michelle's point, I think the recent influx of students, a lot of Somali, understanding a lot of those are ones and twos. So, I mean, that just makes teachers' jobs more challenging if we have more ones and twos than in the past, and if we have fours and fives.
So Mike, just to clarify, when you said, right, the, the one through five by category, are you talking by language, like how many level ones through five Somali, is that what you're looking?
I, I think, I guess if you can do both, if you can do it by, by language, but then also by level, by grade.
Yep.
You know, just, just to give, I think that would give us a much clearer picture of the E L L population and the daily challenges that our teachers face.
We are, we do have that hold already. The technology department helped us looking at the data that was fed up to the state, so we do already have that.
And as long as I'm talking about that now, this is something, I had mentioned to, to John the other day, and we had a data retreat a couple of weeks ago, and we were looking at graduation rates.
Yes.
And I think our graduation rates for our proficiency level one through five was forty-two percent, I think that's what it was, John. And that, kind of say, well, gee, you must not have a very good E L L program if you only have a forty-two. And the explanation was that your sixes are counted with your general population. And I know that's the way we report it to the D P I, but I would also like to see another statistic, putting the sixes with the one through five. So I think that gives us a clearer picture of our success stories in E L L.
Actually, Gwen?
Yes, and so we've.
Do we have that?
Piled some of that information, and I agree with you, it is more true. Even though we meet, certainly are deeply dedicated to meeting the needs of all of our students.
Yep.
When a student comes later in high school speaking no English and maybe has a limited academic preparation from their home country, it can be very challenging to have, to be, have that student ready for graduation on time. However, looking at our, when we look at the population and the graduation rate for our students when combined, it shows a much greater degree of success.
The exact numbers, in two thousand fourteen fifteen, if we just look at the students who were levels one through five, we did have a forty-six point nine percent graduation rate.
Yep.
However, if you pull in the level sixes, the students who've exited the E L L program, the. the graduation rate is at 86%.
Do you have it separated out, just the sixes?
Yes, because you have information just on the sixes.
And I assume that's higher than 86%?
So I think any, anytime we make any presentations publicly, I would, I think we should include that. And Ed, I know, Ed, you had a question.
Yeah, just as regard level six and kids exiting, you keep data on that as well? Specific data as far as how long they've been in the program, that sort of thing? Is that something that you have available? I wouldn't ask you to put something together if you don't, but I'd be really interested in that as well.
I would think we'd be able to run some ad hoc report to see, because we do track the first time that they were identified as an ELL, and then when they exit. So it would just be creating a report.
Thank you. Okay, Chris? Andrew?
Yeah. So after our data retreat of a few weeks ago, you were, you were saying that you needed assistance from the technology department to pull those additional cross tabs? Because I thought we were, I thought we were past that. I thought the assessment, assessment evaluation department can now do that. But you said we needed assistance from the technology department.
Just for the third, we wanted the third Friday count data.
Okay. So we needed assistance on that being just because it's right after the third Friday and isn't integrated into our stuff yet?
Yes.
Okay. If this was four months from now, you would not have needed to bring in additional departments to run this?
Yeah, we should be able to call back data.
Okay. So that was just a timeliness thing.
Right. We just wanted to make sure that we had the most current data reflected in the report.
Okay, that's fair. All right. I mean, our technology department is great. They're also busy. So if we don't, we've had to have interdepartmental assistance to get any data for a long time, and I'm just making sure that we're moving on past that until the point where we have what we need. Thank you.
Chris, did you have a question?
Two questions, if I may. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know what the number, percentage might be. We do have several students that come to us who have not been in school for some time.
Yes.
And I would definitely reflect on that graduation rate. It's hard enough when kids move from different schools here, but I do recall in the past, we had several youngsters who really haven't been in school sometime. You may get here at a middle school or high school level, how do you bring them up to snuff, shall we say? So that still appears to be the case. And I'm sort of curious, I don't know whether that's a figure you keep also, or somebody could have it out there for our population. No. I'm not objecting to those youngsters coming. Please understand me there. But I want it to be a reflection of what we're serving. Because they haven't graduated doesn't mean we haven't made a lot of progress in helping them. The second thing, if I heard correctly, 428 more ESL students this year. And is that something that you knew were coming early in the summer so you could plan for it as school started? Or did most of those youngsters show up on the doorstep?
We did not know that this many additional students would be coming. They did start enrolling, however, in July and early August, so it wasn't a huge rush three days before school.
But it was still July.
July.
Still quicker.
After well-staffed buildings.
Well, the point being, you know, we don't say no to anybody, and we're here to serve all youngsters, even though they show up late, and it's extremely difficult to find room and even more so staff. At that stage of the game, to help those youngsters along. I might point out, 428 youngsters is a decent size elementary building that had been added all of sudden to us. And again, we're here to serve them, and we're going to do that. You folks are. Thank you.
Sharon, I think that Michelle alluded to some degree that there are costs associated, like especially if we're serving students from a new language group that we haven't traditionally served with in large numbers. And also, if you're looking at serving a greater number of ones and twos, quite often those students would need more paraprofessional, bilingual paraprofessional support than somebody who is more advanced in their language learning. It's really hard to know, you know, you can't really stereotype no matter where a student comes from as far as what type of academic preparation they may have. I've worked with, pretty extensively with students from Mexico, and I had students who were valedictorians from their, you know, from their school, and I had students that were struggling coming from not having had much academic experience at all. So really, that whole continuum of educational need that we want to make sure that we're filling, it's important that we're addressing all those needs. But with that, like you said, we're very welcoming, but with that, there are some economic costs to that from time to time that are, when there's a large unexpected influx, can sometimes be something that we have to shift to relatively quickly.
Okay. Thank you. We took a lot of time on that slide, but that's some important information. Thank you.
So the next slide is just showing our top three languages. Now, these are only the levels one through fives. I do have information on the sixes as well, but just for the level one through fives, you can see our Hmong population over the last five years has stayed relatively stable. Our Somali population, that's where we're seeing the largest growth right now, so 89 students in 2012-13. This year, third Friday count, we had 530. I can tell you right now, we have enrolled more after third Friday as well. So they are continually enrolling at this point. Spanish, 200 students, both in the last five years and then actually this past year, we're seeing a bump of students actually from Puerto Rico and Honduras. So that's been our bump in the Spanish-speaking English language learners. As for the level sixes, the exited students in the Somali category, we have 17 students who have exited who are Somali. Right now, we have 410 Hmong students who have exited. In Spanish, we have 1,352 students who have exited.
Is the 410, is that 629?
No.
Okay. A question I have, if I may. Maybe congestion or speculation at your part, I'm just curious. We've had Hmong population for quite a while in this country, and certainly in our district, I would say going back 30 years. I was surprised to see that many still need ESL. I thought that was a more settled population in the country. Any thoughts on that?
It seems that parents are continuing the Hmong language at home, and so students are still being perhaps babysat by grandparents who are speaking Hmong while the parents are working. So the students are identified as an English language learner, they have had a significant exposure to a language other than English.
So that would be basically, do you mind if I go on a little bit here?
No, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Basically preschool before they come in. So as soon as they come into our K4 programs or kindergarten for sure, they're exposed to English. So I would like to think there would be a decent two, three-year turnover in them getting into level six.
The majority still of our little ones coming into 4K who are Hmong are still in your lower proficiency levels.
I understand that, but at that age, I'm just curious, if you think in a couple of years in our school system, would they not be moving up to that quickly?
Five to seven years. Five to seven years to acquire English.
Okay.
Because they may not have had the great degree of exposure, they might have.
Exposure is for Hmong.
Quite often, the exposure is almost completely Hmong. And I think of, you know, my own parents, you know, my father was born in the United States, but he had two parents that spoke Greek. And so he came to school and didn't really speak a lot of English when he started. I think that the larger the community, the easier it is to some extent to not become quite as proficient. So even though it might be second or even sometimes third generation, sometimes there's still a very strong dominance of the initial language. Andrew?
So that would, I'd say that would continue then? Do we, do we find that even like our own, I guess in, you know, I'm thinking of people that I graduated with who were probably Hmong immigrants at the time and now have children of their own? Even in, even in those cases, you find that like maybe someone I went to school with and graduated ahead of me in my class that, and I'm not saying right or wrong, but that there's a good chance that Hmong has still spoken at home even with a parent who lived in America as far as they can remember in life?
I think it would vary from person to person and situation to situation. You could have, I've known parents who were second language speakers themselves who, you know, at home insisted on speaking, they're speaking only in English, and then the child quite often will, you know, sometimes end up speaking English more, but then sometimes the traditional language is lost. So it's kind of a balance of different perspective. Again, it depends partly on what is the exposure in and out of the house? Because you might have two parents who speak Hmong or speak Spanish, yet if they're in childcare or in preschool or in some other setting where they might be exposed to more English language, they would now most likely learn English more quickly.
But, but you're saying that there's a, it's a pretty high amount of Hmong speakers that are at the, at the lower levels of English when they come in in 4K? Like a lot of them?
What percentage would you say of the entering 4K students who are Hmong?
I don't, the percentage?
The percentage of those students that are in level one or two?
Yeah. We'd have to look in our database. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. I mean, don't spend a lot of time. I just thought if you had a sense of approximately.
Of course, you could have, you could have some, you could have some students who's, you know, the example I gave of the person who finished ahead of, you know, ahead of me in my class, you know, straight A's in English, you know, we, that could also be someone who, a kid who spoke English or was bilingual from as soon as they could talk, and then we would never have reason to even, they wouldn't be in the ELL program at all.
No, if they're raised speaking both?
Yes.
Correct.
So that, okay.
The state refers to that person as a balanced bilingual?
Right. And we might not even, we might not even know for a while. Or, I mean, it wouldn't be something we'd have to even keep track of because they're learning in English at the pace that. It's good that they, it's good that people speak both languages from a young age, but we might never have reason to know if they're doing English, they're guided reading, moving along.
Because they're not an identified English language learner, so.
Right. We might not even know.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
So as we've had this, this change, and specifically around the Somali population, which has been our big growth, we're continuing to focus on culturally and linguistically responsive practices. We've been doing a lot of, not, we, our department, we have Somali paraprofessionals that have been doing a lot of professional development for Green Bay staff. And by that, it's been bus drivers, it's been food service workers, schools. So they've been out working with the staff around the Somali culture. We have now, in the past five years, employed Somali bilingual paraprofessionals in the district. And a few years ago, when the Somali population was much smaller, we held Saturday Somali parent meetings at Keller Elementary just to answer parent questions. We had a Saturday focus just on transportation, food service, high school graduation requirements. So the parents kind of told us what they were interested in. However, as we've continued to grow, this year, the schools are doing Somali parent meetings just to have that communication. So for example, two weeks ago, Edison Middle School had Somali parent meetings at 10:00 in the morning, and then they had one at 6:00 at night, so families who were working different shifts could attend. And I asked Joey Bell, the principal over there, you know, how many families did you get? And he said they had 28 Somali families at Edison, and he believes 26 of those families showed up. So, and they're going to continue those discussions.
That's my success story.
Oh, is it? Oh, is it? Do I have the numbers right? So it was a huge, huge percentage.
Julie, how difficult has it been to find Somali-speaking staff members?
At first, it was a little easier when we only needed a few. Right now, we do have a few openings, because you do need to have 48 credits after high school to be a full-time paraprofessional in the district. That has been a challenge. Right now, we have a couple of people who have received degrees from South Africa or Kenya who are in the process of getting their transcripts equated to US standards. So there's a company they have to send their transcripts to, and then that company equates them to credits or a degree. So the majority, right now, we have eight Somali paraprofessionals, and I believe at least six of them have college degrees.
Great. Okay. Andrew?
So can we, if we're short, if we're short on Somali paraprofessionals, can we, I mean, can we hire Somali-speaking classroom assistants or something like that that would not, you know, breach any lines of what only a para can do? I mean, just, just an additional person who speaks the language in a, I mean, that could be very helpful.
That is something we could look into. I don't know the job description if, I guess.
It might have to be, it might have to be, it might have to be created, but I was saying something, maybe something that would be along the lines of a, of a title, parent assistant or something like that. Not that it would be that, but I would hate to have a, if we have, if we have people that could step in and do the work and help out, help a teacher where, a teacher that doesn't speak Somali, I'd rather find a way to get them in perhaps while they're working towards credits. You know, the pay might not be the same, the duties might be a little bit different, but we need to get, you know, we need to get people, we need to have as many people as we can helping out if we're not getting the positions filled the regular way.
I agree, both for our paraprofessional staff and for our teaching staff as a whole. We're looking at a lot of different, different opportunities for recruitment and retention, particularly of our bilingual teachers in Spanish and Somali, Hmong, all the languages. It's, they're, it's challenging to find the people for the positions, but I agree, sometimes we have to be flexible in what we're looking for. But at the same time, we're also trying to make sure that we're, you know, balancing the high quality and rigor we want for, for the support for the students. So as often as possible, we want to hire people who meet the qualifications, but when not, I think we have to consider what can we do to just meet the needs of the classroom.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
So before Gwen starts the program eval, just a little overview of the programming that we have, both at the elementary and the secondary level. So dual language is our program that we have at the elementary level, and that's where there's instruction in both Spanish and English. It's taught by a bilingually licensed teacher. And the two types of dual language, there's a one-way immersion, which has only the Spanish-speaking English language learners in it. And then there's a two-way immersion, which has the Spanish-speaking English language learners and your level seven, your no, your students who are not English language learners. So that's what we have at the elementary level for our dual language program. And then we also have for Somali students, for Hmong students, for Chinese students, for all other languages, we have ESL, which is English as a second language, and that is taught by an ESL licensed teacher. And the model is content-based ESL. And that's where the elementary ESL teachers, we have English language development standards in addition to the content standards. So it's the language of math, the language of social studies, the language of science, the language of language arts. So our elementary ESL teachers are pre-teaching a lot of that academic language aligned to the English language development standards. So at the secondary level, we also have bilingual programs. We have dual language, and it's taught once again by a bilingually licensed teacher. However, at the secondary program, our main bilingual program is a transitional bilingual education program. And that's under the assumption that the students coming in at that grade level already know how to read and write in Spanish. So we are moving them into all English instruction. So we're transitioning them into all English instruction. We do have the two-way immersion program, however, that's running right now through Edison Middle School, and that's the students primarily coming out of Dan's right now, but soon the students coming out of Wilder will be joining that program as well. And then also at the high school, we have as well ESL, English as a second language classes. That's more sheltered. have as well ESL, English as a second language classes. That's more sheltered English instruction. So that's for our Somali students who are new to the country. They are taking Biology and Social Studies 10. They're doing grade level classes. It's taught by an ESL teacher who's sheltering or supporting all of that language by using ESL strategies for them to acquire that grade level content.
Brenda?
So do they have one ESL teacher for all of their classes?
No, for ESL, you need to be certified, and for bilingual, actually, you need to be certified both in the content and that additional license. So our person, for example, at Preble, we have a social studies teacher who is bil lingually and ESL certified. So she teaches bilingual Social Studies 10, ESL Social Studies 10. We have a person who's certified in math, in social studies. So they have to be certified in that content area in addition to ESL.
Wow.
Okay.
Well, that's wonderful.
So, we've concluded with that portion, and now we're going to go on with Gwen with our program evaluation. She did, did quite a bit of work for us in the, the previous year, taking a look at our programming, taking a look at what's best research out there, and has some, some results of the evaluation as well as some recommendations.
Thanks for the opportunity to bring some highlights from the program evaluation. We started about a year ago, and we were using a participatory model, which meant we were taking the questions one at a time. We would meet every four to six weeks to come back with the results that we found to the answers to those questions. And we were looking primarily at program effectiveness for our ESL instructional model. And thank you so much for going over those, those acronyms, because they communicate much, much more aggression. And also our dual language instructional model. The activities that were part of the process were, we completed benchmarking, which meant we looked at comparable districts throughout the United States to see, to look at what students were, how they were achieving in districts that had the same type of growth that we did over the last 10 years. We also looked at school districts in Wisconsin. We had telephone conversations with our counterparts at two of our districts, and found that they moved into a dual language instructional model earlier than we did. Yet, they are, they're able to share our questions and provide some ideas on growth that they looked into, and we find that many of the same things we're talking about, they're talking about too. So we're right there in there with it together. We did a literature review, because part of program evaluation is to be steeped in the literature, so that you know the questions that you're asking perhaps have been asked before, and how were they answered. Maybe those questions you should be asking, that you find in the literature to look into, and also some look for's. What would, what would be a pattern that you should be looking at? Then we sat down to do our own effectiveness data review. We looked at achievement, graduation rates, and optimization of second language So we conducted a longitudinal study with the data that we had on a standardized achievement test, which would have been the WKCE, Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Examination, if I have my acronym correct. And we looked at each year individually, 2009 through 2014, and we were trying to find, was there a difference in the achievement or the performance of students that were in the English as a second language or ESL instructional model, or the transitional bilingual educational model? And the reason we were looking for statistical significance was to know that we had a large enough sample, but also if there was a difference, was it really a difference? And what we found, there were some years where the ESL instructional model, students achieved proficiency and higher scores. And then other years, it was the TBE, or the Transitional Bilingual Educational Model. So what I can tell you is, just like we found in the literature, it's not conclusive as to one model being better or outperforming the other. But we, while we had the data, though, we kept moving through with our questions, and we looked at, is there a pattern towards the acquisition of English language? And as Julie had referred to, and I think the question that we had from our board members, we found that our pattern has been at grade three, there's an English language proficiency level of three. At grade four, it was a four. At grade five, a five. And at grade six, it became English language proficiency level of six. So we asked the question, was there a pattern in the data where some students are achieving that faster? Is there a way to optimize it? So we did our analysis to optimize, and we found that we had students who were achieving proficiency on the state assessment a little sooner. If the pattern was at grade three, it was an English language proficiency level of a four. And at grade four, a five. And at grade five, a six. And we have to keep in mind, and we were reminded about this in the literature, that a standardized achievement test is probably the last place that you're going to see the proficiency achieved, because it's not only the acquisition of the English language. It is on top of that, the knowledge and skills, the critical thinking, the complex thinking that students are required to do on those standardized achievement tests. So we're looking at the pattern, and then we decided, well, let's now go inside of what we're doing, and let's look at our dual language program and compare that to students who had just completed or are moving into our transitional bilingual education program. So we had grade four students who were not part of our dual language instructional model, and then we had our grade three students. So we thought, let's see if we're starting to see this optimization occur. And what we found at that point was that we had good data, but we also had some spaces in our data. So we had data being collected, but it wasn't always in a centralized place. And knowing for the program evaluation year, we needed to get together and build a plan for collecting the data, and collecting data not just in English, but also in Spanish, because we're running a dual language program. So all of that together, once again, we couldn't come out and say, this, you know, we're seeing this type of growth, this is conclusive. But we saw some good signs, and we thought, let's take all this information now, and let's turn it into a monitoring plan. So that leads us into our recommendations. Any questions up to this point?
Ed?
There's a number of variables in all of that. Were you able to account for, you talked about the, the program models, but what about the individual instructor? Did that come in at all in terms of, of looking at your data as a variable?
We talked about that at the table during our evaluation, but what we find, to get down to the value add of the instructor, we're even struggling with that at a state level. So that wasn't something we were going to take on at our program evaluation level. But what, talking about variables, what we did need to do, and, and so reminds me that in doing a program evaluation, there are many groups that you're monitoring. So, for example, to the point that you're looking at, it would be the students that started with us in 4K and have been with us through grade three. Or perhaps they started us in, with kindergarten. And what is, it brings on the dosage model. So if you've had this type of instructional model, and that dosage has been going from kindergarten, let's say, up through grade three, are those students progressing, and what rate are they progressing at, as compared to students who might be coming and joining us just at grade three? But we didn't break it down to the, to the teacher, to the teacher level.
Great.
Thank you.
Brenda?
The first study that you were talking about, where you were compares, you're comparing ESL with transitional English, those were secondary students?
We took all of the data of students that, who had completed the WKCE, so that would have been grade three through grade 10.
Okay.
And looked at each year individually, and compared the average score within that year.
Was there any difference between languages?
So what we did to kind of, to control for the variables there, primarily for the ESL model, we were looking at students, our Asian students. And in our transitional bilingual educational model, it was our Spanish-speaking students. So we were able, we didn't, with intention, just kept it to two different languages that we were looking at, or two acquisition models. So I didn't bring in students that we would have had a smaller subgroup or a smaller population, trying to have some comparable sizes throughout, throughout each of the years.
So all our Spanish students are in the transitional bilingual model of some sort?
They, they were. In 2012, 13, we did a revamp of the program, because bilingual education is one of those things where they're, they're constantly doing research and they're looking at it. And so the old paradigm, what we did in the past was, we kind of held off on introducing English and doing literacy in English until the students were in third grade. And then we transitioned them into English, and they stayed in English. And I'm sure you remember that from being at Howe. They were taught in Spanish, K1, 2, and then phew, we just moved them over to English. But the latest research shows that doing English and Spanish simultaneously is what's best. So in 2012, 13, that's when we implemented not holding off on English literacy in kindergarten. So our students are listening, reading, writing, and speaking in English and Spanish from kindergarten on. So that's why on the previous slide, Gwen had, the kids are, right now are in fourth grade, who've had this particular program.
Okay.
So that's the, the group that Gwen is kind of eyeballing and watching. And when we talk about monitoring, that's the group we're really monitoring, because she did see a bump in those kids, their English, that she didn't see in the group ahead of them. But it was just a one year. So she needs to, we need to keep monitoring to see that what we're doing is what's best.
Right. So I would say that the program evaluation has been really effective and helpful for us. But again, since we made some changes, and still are, we're beginning to see that the fruit of those changes being born. But it hasn't, those students haven't been in process long enough to, to show the full growth that they would have over the traditional five to seven-year span that we would, we would expect for full.
They took one state test so far, the third grade state test. So that's why on the monitoring plan, you'll see there's more triangulation of data that Gwen will talk about.
But we are seeing promising information.
Ken, you still?
I, I think my question's actually answered in that song.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
Okay. So we recommend a monitoring plan, and an example from the literature that we have, and this speaks to many of the points that Julie brought up. In this monitoring plan, it helps us to see where should a student be who has been in our dual language program after two years? And using like our normal curve equivalent, what should we expect to see in growth? And if a student has been with us for three years, what should we expect to see? This, this model of our monitoring plan would not only be for our dual language students, but also our ESL students, because it, it gives projections on where every student should be as they're acquiring language. And what we learned during our program evaluation is we need to have several points of data. And as Julie had mentioned, the state assessment is one, but it happens once a year. And we have been seeing some promising movement. So, for example, in our access for ELLs 2.0, what we, what we saw was a nice bump or movement from a proficiency level of three to proficiency level of six at the grades three and four that we didn't have in previous years. We don't know, though, if it was, if it's due to all of our instructional model and efforts, or is it because the access test went online? And it's now administered online instead of an in-person assessment. But when we take that information and we look at, from our other testing, where we can see the most impact we can have, where a lot of variation is at grade three and four, it's, it's something to keep looking into. And with our STAR reading Spanish and English, we can see if our students are on track in their first language, or L1, and their second language, L2. And what Julie was referencing is that when we looked at that data, we're seeing students who are in their instructional reading level, on track in their first language and their second language, and what this can mean for, for other growth patterns and different participation. And with that program in the same, the same suite of STAR, we can then compare back and forth with our NCE. And then when building this plan, we want to make sure that this is not just for program evaluation data collection, but for our classroom teachers. So we're also using the trajectory for bi-literacy, which brings in our independent reading level. And we put these three points of data together, we can detect the growth that, that we're seeing, if it is really a true positive. Is this really taking place? And is it because of this model? Are we optimizing the acquisition of the English language, plus the knowledge and skills that goes with it?
Okay.
Additional questions on the?
Brenda?
Sorry. No, go ahead.
So the, what's up there, the strategic assessment calendar is just for our Spanish-speaking students? Or are we doing something similar to assess the progress of our, all the rest of our 36 languages that are spoken in our district?
So, yes, we are recommending, so we do have one in place definitely for our dual language, and our, we are recommending a strategic assessment calendar also for our ESL model. However, we have our strategic assessment calendar for our English-speaking, and our ESL students would follow more of that. But we want to make sure that using the points that we have in here were applicable, it is used, so we can keep looking at our different programs. Plus, bring in a few other points, such as using our dues indicators, our dropout early warning system indicators, credits earned. So we can look at graduation outlook, and I have the year 2020, and that would have been a recommendation from last year, but moving forward, to look at what is the supports that are necessary in high school. So through all of these data collection events, whether they are assessments or other methods, to bring them together, so we could look to see how we're moving forward.
Okay, go ahead.
So is the, the time to learn English, these five to seven years, you said, is it the same for our students who don't have the, the ability to be in a bilingual classroom and, and learn to read in both languages and all those kinds of things? But I guess what I'm asking, and what are, it seems like there would be some disadvantages to students who don't speak Spanish as their second language. And, and, and maybe I'm wrong. So if you just speak to that.
So what research, the longitudinal research that's out there right now on the different programs, do show that students who are in English only acquire that language perhaps a little bit faster than students who are in a dual language program. However, it's the students in the dual language program who actually end up closing that gap and getting to that 50 NCE faster than the, the students who are in English only.
So our students who don't speak Spanish are in English-only classes with ESL support?
ESL, correct, correct.
Okay. And so are we following, and so, so they, are you saying they don't ever get to the same proficiency levels as the bilinguals, or it just takes them longer?
They do. It may take longer. Some of the longitudinal research, you know, has shown that they close that gap. But we do a content-based ESL program, which is the best program that's out there for ESL. So that's why we're excited to continue to work with Gwen, to monitor both the students in the ESL program and the students in our dual language program. And, you know, in four or five years, we'll be able to have some really good data.
But the assessments will be different, because your STAR test is not provided in all of the other languages.
It would just STAR, STAR English.
It'll just be STAR English. So it won't be, can't be an apples-to-apples comparison, because your assessments aren't available in all the different languages.
We'll just be using the STAR English and the state assessment.
Assessment.
And access 2.0.
Okay.
And I think sometimes a question that's also asked is, if, if dual language is good for our Spanish-speaking students, why not offer a Mongh dual language, or a Somali dual language, or Cantonese, or whatever, whatever language we wanted to focus on? And the issue arises partly when we talked about hiring staff. It's really challenging to hire a sufficient number of, of teachers in, who are bilingual in Spanish and English. But looking at other subject areas, the, the challenge is there. And also the materials development.
Resources.
The resources are much more robust, just given the, the national, the economy of scale that we have across the United States for dual language with Spanish as compared to the other language groups. So you wouldn't find, like, really high-quality dual language Somali literacy, literacy kits and math kits and things like that. So, so this is something that we have to focus on as well. But overall, we're seeing very positive results.
Okay. John, are we going to talk about next steps now?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I don't want to cloud this here, out of curiosity. We're basically comparing types of programs to serve non-native language learners. We don't really have a control group to say, here's a group that we don't intervene at all with, how do they do? I'd argue that might be unethical to do. By any chance, in, in literature, is there anything that addresses that? And I bring this up because I've heard from people before saying, well, you know, back then, you didn't have those programs, people came and they, they learned a language. So I'm looking for a response to that, I guess.
So comparison of, of general program that we have, programming that we have as opposed to just having students access regular instruction without modification or support, what would the results be? what would the results be?
So the literature will say that doing nothing at all is the way not to go. So we're just, because it's, it's learning in English and/or learning English. So when your entire day is that you're learning in English at the same time you're learning English, the cognitive load is just immense. And how much of that skill knowledge, skill and critical thinking knowledge is lost while you're trying to pick up what is, what is being said? So Julie had mentioned the research that's done with the different trajectory model, where they have gone through and looked at different groups. And they try to do it not with a control group, but with, they do it quasi-experimental, that they'll look at data sets and compare different programs. And so they have gone through to say, if you are in an ESL program, we project in two or three years, you would be at a certain point. If you're in a dual language one-way model or a dual language two-way model, what would be that growth that we would expect, expect over so many years? But to your point, no, we wouldn't have a group that we would just keep separate. And so you're right, there's only, and, and as they've gone through and you read the different meta-analyses and meta-analyses, you find that they don't always agree with the groups that they've picked to study of the different researchers. So it is a, you know, I think everything we're doing in our research and rounding it in the literature, it will be sound, we'll be able to come back and report what we've been able to find on our plan.
I think as well, it's important to note, and we'll talk about this a little, a little bit further, is it's not only achieving proficiency in English when we have high quality dual language programming, it's that the students will literally become very literate in both languages. And when we think about college and career readiness, that's a huge job asset, especially when we consider the changing population, whether it's, you know, the medical field, the legal field, us looking for bilingual teachers. There are many opportunities out there first for future employees who are truly bilingual and bilingual. And so that's another huge advantage that we have when we look at, at dual language instruction. So thinking of next steps, we're working together, but of course, we're going to implement the recommendations of our program evaluation. And then Julie is working on a number of different aspects of creating a program plan with her staff. And I'm not sure if you want to speak to that at all, but.
Sure, I think John worked with his staff when he was in his previous district. Just creating an ELL plan to put it out there as to, here's our goals, here's our mission, our vision, our values of the programming. What do we hope for our students? And looking at secondary, I think the, the graduation rates when we do look at the students who are levels one through five, 46% is something we can do better on. So looking at a restructure of secondary ELL services, looking at the students who are failing those classes at secondary, why are they failing? So that's something that we would like to work on this year. We'd also like to explore, as John talked about, the development of a six through 12 dual language pathway. Last year, Wisconsin was the 14th state that adopted offering a seal of bilinguality to graduates of high school. And a few districts already in Wisconsin have moved forward with offering that. So we would like to pursue having a seal of bilinguality for our graduate, for our graduates. And that would lead to an increased number of students receiving dual credits, which is a great thing. And then we of course want to enhance our opportunity of recruiting bilingual staff.
Could Julie talk about that a little bit? I know Jean Marsh has talked to us often about the difficulty and the competition for bilingual teachers. Talk about how we're doing here and also a lot of areas, a lot of school districts are, are doing bonuses. Are we looking at bonuses for bilingual staff?
For the past few years, we have offered bonuses for bilingual staff. It is extremely competitive here in the state of Wisconsin as more and more districts are actually going to dual language programs. The two-way model in particularly, because the, the level seven parents, the non-English language learner parents, they want their kids to be bilingual. So districts are offering dual language and are just recruiting like mad. And so many districts are actually going out of country, South America, Spain, Puerto Rico. So that is happening right here in the state of Wisconsin as well. But it's, it's not just about the bonuses. I feel it's also about the support that we're able to give our staff here. And we do have teachers who leave us and a few have come back to us. And they talk about the level of support that they get here in Green Bay. And that's something that we're quite proud of. We do have bilingual literacy coaches who are supporting our teachers. We have a few district staff who also support the teachers. So many of the other districts do not offer that. So they can throw money, but there's also, we talk to the teachers about the level of support and the collaboration that you have here.
Okay. To that end, when, when you began the presentation this evening, you talked about the district priorities and you talked about three of the four. And I think you just hit on the fourth one with thriving workforce. And I realize we've had issues with turnover and trying to attract and retain talent. But what you just said speaks volumes about that particular priority and, and you know, what you are doing. And I can't help but notice Julie, that of your, of your leaders here, the staff that you have, so many of them are former Howe staff.
You are correct, and there is one current Howe staff.
Current Howe staff too, I was going to say, yes.
And I dare say that's no accident.
Three of them are former Howe and none is a current, so yes, good way to point that out, Mr. Dorf.
So I agree that that type of proactive recruitment is incredibly important, especially when we consider the, the competition there is for the bilingual teachers we're looking for. Another thing that we've begun exploration of is consideration of, of like a grow your own diverse workforce as well. Because if we can, it's one, quite often districts will go to great lengths to recruit people from Spain or South America. And they come and maybe spend a year or two here and realize that maybe it wasn't exactly what they're hoping for. And they make a choice to, to go to a different location, either back home or to a different state place in the United States. And so if we're looking at, at, as we create a really, really high quality and we have a really high quality dual language bilingual programming, we'll also have bilingual graduates of our high schools that we can then recruit and get, gain interest in, in you know, perhaps assisting with tuition or at least getting them connected to some of the teacher ed programs so that we can keep that relationship going. And those would be community members that would be coming back to reinvest in our schools and take our schools forward.
We actually do have two Green Bay high school graduates who have come back to be bilingual teachers. I'm very proud to say, one of them, I was her teacher when she was in eighth grade, new to the country at Washington Middle School. She is now teaching kindergarten at Sullivan Elementary School. And another one graduated from UW Oshkosh and is also teaching kindergarten. She's in East, both of them were East High graduates.
Uh, where?
East High, and I do believe, Mr. Dorf, you were the principal there when they graduated.
His head is growing.
Anything else, Chris?
One last thing, if I may. Julie, how long have you been downtown with the weather?
This is my 13th year.
I just want to point out, I would hope you'd be very proud, as you should be, the way the program has grown in terms of quality.
Yes, I, I love my job.
All right, anything else, Brenda?
If you could just expand a little, you talked about dual credits. And I'm not sure, is that what kind of dual credits you're referring to?
Well, turbocharge, you've heard about turbocharge with the goal of having students graduate with 15 college credits. So when we are looking at other districts, for example, the state of Utah has state legislation that is, they want bilingual graduates in Utah. So their pathway, they have a state pathway. And it's actually as a freshman, they have, there are students who are coming out of dual language, take AP Spanish. And as a sophomore, they're taking AP Spanish literature. As juniors and seniors, they have agreements with universities. So they are graduating with over 12 credits in Spanish with practically a Spanish minor at that point. So when we talk about a pathway with concurrent credits and seal of bilinguality, that's my dream.
All right, anything else?
Just one more comment, just to follow up on what Dr. Wagner had said regarding, you know, have a right to be proud about it. One of the things that I noticed over the years in working with ELL teachers, ELL department, is the level of engagement that you, you have, that the level of connectedness that you've had with families. And I think it's really significant and important to point out that whether as a principal or as a board member, when I've talked to people at the department down here and I mention a name, a family name, I know who these kids are, you know the families. And we're talking, how many thousands of kids are in, are in the programs?
I think everybody who works down here, we have.
No, I'm talking about children.
Yes, 4,500.
Yeah, and I know everybody is the same way. And that's, that is really to you, to all of their credit.
We have a connection to the schools, we're supporting those schools. We know those families somewhat in the schools, but the schools do know them better.
Yeah.
But that's just while we do business.
Anything else, John?
I'd like to say too, that, that my background, in addition to being in administration, is in ESL bilingual ed. And I say that because I have worked in a number of different districts with their ESL and bilingual programming. And I'm very, very impressed with the work that's being done here. With 30% of our, our students being second language learners, we have a great deal of support. We have a lot of high quality programming. And I think it's really something for us to be proud of. I think that it's one of the aspects in which we're able to celebrate our diversity and grow as a, as a community with, with great support of our teachers and the board as well for, for having over the years set us up for this type of success. So I want to say thanks to the board and thanks especially to our, our teachers and administrators in the ESL bilingual programming.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for that presentation. That was an excellent presentation and to the rest of the staff being here. Again, this is another one of the great things about public schools and about Green Bay, is that we serve every child every day, no matter what the challenges are. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And John, what did, you want to just talk briefly about what's coming up next month?
Ah, yes, to refresh my memory momentarily, but McKinney-Vento. So we have met and we, we went through and put together a list of, of additional possible progress monitoring reports. And our next month's report is going to be on McKinney-Vento. Ways that we're serving students who are in transition, as well as supporting students who are in poverty and having needs with, with food sources and things of that nature. So I think it'll be very timely and it will give us an opportunity to go a little deeper there.
And for the public's enlightenment, McKinney-Vento deals with our homeless students.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
It was the weather radio, it's been on the pod, so.
It won't bother us.
It won't bother us, yeah.
Is there a tornado headed our way or are we?
I don't know, something.
A little marionette pounding?
No, but perhaps someone could check it out.
What? Oh, that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for a lot. Next, we have our superintendent's update, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to start with the calendar. And we are in the month of October. Yet this month, we will have our public engagement session regarding the budget. And that is October 24th, beginning at 5:30 right here in room 331 downtown. And October 25th, we have the WASB Fall Regional Meeting at 6 o'clock at the Rock Garden, Wisconsin Association of School Boards. November 1st is a public hearing and special board meeting to adopt the budget at 5:30. November 7th, our teaching and learning work session meeting, immediately followed by the organizational support work session beginning at 5:30. Again, here in the boardroom. November 24th is our regular board meeting at 5:30.
21st.
Or 21st, what did I say, 23rd?
24.
24.
You said the 24th.
I'm looking one ahead.
Yeah, you're one ahead.
All right, I apologize. Again, the board meetings next month in November are November 7th and November 21st at 5:30. November 24th, 25th is Thanksgiving recess and the schools and district office will be closed. So that's the calendar. I do have two success stories. One of them actually dovetails right nicely into the conversation we just engaged in. And it does come from Matt Weller, who is a assistant principal at Edison. And, and our, our community is broadening in terms of providing supports for our families as well. This came from Matt to me. He said, yesterday Edison hosted two get-togethers for our new Somali families. The first was at 10:00 in the morning, the second at 6:00 at night. Out of the 27 new families, we had 25 attendees. Speakers at our meeting included Jeremy Wildenberg of Transportation, Lynette Zelik and Amanda Frisk from Food Service, and Josh Pachek from Technology. He went on to say they gave a great positive impression, making sure our new families understood the services Green Bay offers and detailing how families could access those services. We were most impressed by dedication of these district staff. They adjusted their busy calendars and didn't balk about giving over three hours to these meetings. They were generous in every way, delivering far beyond our expectation. Almost every one of the attendees expressed how welcome and included they felt after the meeting. As we look for staff getting out of the office and making a difference in our schools, we have four great examples with Jeremy, Lynette, Amanda, and Josh. So I think that, that supports our, our goal of putting schools at the center of our work. But it also broadens the number of support network for our families as well. The other, the other item I have is to just update the board on, not only we had our ELL report, but we have many foreign exchange students who come to the Green Bay Public Schools to learn and to study. We have 21 this year in our schools, representing France, Bolivia, Brazil, China, Germany, Italy, Mexico, Spain, Thailand, and Sweden, Switzerland, and Norway. So it's a really rich, diverse group that is in our, in our hallways. And I'm sure our students are learning from them as much as they're learning from us. It's always exciting to have those students. Each of the schools, some of the students are just coming for a semester only. And we have some that started the first semester and we've got some coming second. But the majority of them are here the whole entire school year. And I know that a lot of effort goes in to bring these students into our schools, not only in the part of the schools, but Linda Blahoyak, who works in our office. And I know that schools fine, and families host them as well, so. Any other questions? I don't know a lot more about that. I know that I see Tom Ho back there in case there's any other questions that the board might have. But those are my two success stories.
Well, let me add one thing to that.
Sure.
I, I think it shows that there are a lot of people that have their youngsters coming to us from other countries that are very happy to come to Green Bay and be in this district.
Absolutely.
And they don't shy away from being here, they want to be a part of what we have here and have to offer. And as you said, it's also what our students are running from these students. So we're very fortunate around there.
We are, we are. And I have no action items, so that includes my report.
All right, thank you. Next we'll go to our Inter-City Student Council report, turn that over to Grace.
Okay, so to start off with Prebble. So we had our senior night for the girls volleyball and it went really well. We have a lot of college fairs going on and I know we have a bilingual one going on too. The PSAT will be on Wednesday. Our football won their game against Pulaski and so they will be going to the playoffs. Our soccer's also going to playoffs. And our fall sports are all just winding down now and winter sports are starting to get going. For Southwest, their football did extremely well this season. And I believe they will be going to playoffs as well, yeah. They have lots of colleges visiting their schools. And a lot of clubs are getting started and academic teams are getting started. For West, the winter sports are starting to get the word out about beginning some workouts. And many fall sports are coming to an end. And colleges also visit. and many fall sports are coming to an end, and colleges also visiting. For East, their football won their second game of the year, so that's super exciting for them. And just the winter sports coming to a start and fall sports coming to an end, it's kind of a lull before another great beginning of sports. And then John Dewey, the-
Can I just, East soccer won the conference?
Yep.
Yeah?
And then for John Dewey, the seniors are really delving into their capstones at the moment, their senior projects they have to do. And they also have like school volunteer hours that they're getting in. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Grace. Next is our Legislative Liaison Report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks, Brenda. The first item refers to something this board had endorsed us doing a month ago. We had sent a letter to legislative candidates in our area asking them to respond to a number of questions. And I'll just briefly go over for the public's enlightenment, these are the questions that we ask legislators and candidates in races this fall. Number one is, what is your vision for the future of public education? How does your vision for public education relate to the economic future of our state? And number two, what do you see as the greatest challenges facing our public schools? What is your view of public schools overall? What is your view of the public schools in your community? Three, will you support providing additional funds to help local school districts that have disproportionately high numbers of low-income students, special needs students, and our English language learners to address the needs of these students? And four, do you understand and support the present funding mechanism for private school vouchers and independent charter schools? If yes, how do you propose to continue to fund both the private and public schools? We sent out that letter by email and by US mail to candidates. We gave them a deadline of October 17th. Last Thursday, October 13th, Sandy sent out a follow-up email to legislators and candidates who had not responded. So the deadline was today. We didn't give them a time, so if we get something later this evening or even tomorrow morning, we will still accept those. Lori will handle getting that information. As we mentioned in the letter, that we will provide these, their responses, unedited, unfiltered, on our website. And if the board agrees, I would suggest that Lori also send out a news release to the news media on that fact that we've done this, who has responded and who did not respond. And also, we discussed this last week at Michelle's Parent Advisory Committee. Parents are very interested that we do this, so we're going to let the parents know that this is out there. So this is good information, I think, not only for our parents, but for our community. I'll just go down on who responded and who did not respond. Senator Rob Coles responded, as did his opponent, John Powers. Representative Eric Gendrick responded, he is unopposed. Heidi Fensel responded, but her opponent, Representative John Nigren, did not respond. Senator Dave Hanson responded. His opponent, Eric Windenberg, has not responded. Representative Joel Kitchens and his opponent, Lynn Utech, have both responded. Tony Lee has responded. His opponent, Representative Dave Steffen, has not responded. Representative John Mako and his opponent, Noah Reeve, neither one has responded. And Representative Jim Steinke and his opponent, Sam Kelly, neither one of them have responded. So that's what we have right now. And we will be putting those on the website by the end of the week. Any questions?
Do you think we should, I guess, does the board agree that we should send out a press release saying that this information is available, actually to the general community once it's on our website?
If I may, for that question, I'm astounded at something as important as education is, and size the district we have, that we have these many, these many people not responding.
Not responding.
I mean, that astounds me.
And that's why we sent the follow-up last week. I said to Sandy, "Let's give them one more chance. Let's send out a follow-up saying, this is a reminder and the deadline is-"
The deadline is midnight tonight, so-
Right.
They may still choose to respond.
And we would even, if it comes in tomorrow morning, I mean, I'm not going to be that tight about the deadline, as long as we get it by, I'd say by tomorrow, and then that would give Lori time to get things set up and put on the website.
Well, I agree that we should do exactly what you had said there as far as providing that information, providing the responses. It's good information for people to have. And the fact that so many didn't respond, I agree with Dr. Wagner on that too. I'm just kind of astounded by that.
And that's going to be on the website as well, correct?
What's that?
You're going to acknowledge everyone who received the request.
Right. Well, I think we'll say, "These are the ones who responded." And I think we'll list those who didn't respond, because if we don't say that, they'll say-
They went after these folks and these people responded.
Because if we don't say they didn't respond, they'll say, "Well, how come you didn't send them one?"
Right, no, I think we should acknowledge them.
And, I mean, this is their opportunity to talk directly to thousands of voters.
People who are interested in education, right?
Right, so that will be, that will be what we're doing.
I'm sorry, point of clarification. Then you see it being on our webpage?
Yes.
Responses, as well as sending it to the media?
Well, I think, my thought, Lori and I discussed it, is that we sent out a release saying, "Green Bay School Board Sent Out The Questionnaire To These Candidates. These Responded And Those Didn't. The Answers Will Be On The Website." I don't think the media wants all of these essays, you know, all of these answers. I think the fact that we, and then they just direct them to the website. If they're interested, they can go to our website and look at it.
Yeah.
I bet they would let them know, too.
Good way to go?
I bet they would.
Okay.
As a service to the community.
Thank you for putting that together.
Yes, Sandy, Lori, Mike.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah.
And Sandy. Sandy's the one that sent all these out and sent out the reminder. The second item is a memo from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau on Public School Funding. And I had shared this with Michelle's parent group. They were very interested in that. And what this memo confirms is something that I've been talking about for a long time, is that, but I think it was important to keep it in the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, which is a nonpartisan governmental agency created to gauge the financial impact of legislation. And often, if there's a bill, it will, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau will attach a financial note to it saying, "If you pass this bill, this is what it's going to cost." They've looked at the state budget, and they released the memorandum on the estimate level of state support for K-12 education statewide into individual school districts. And their conclusion was, is that zero adjustment to revenue limits and no increase in per-people aid in 2015-16 means increased state support amounted to a tax shift away from the local property tax. Says, "To be clear, unless a district passed an operating referendum, they saw no increase in per-people resources in the school year." So again, the state, you can, and people have seen stories that, I think last year, that Green Bay got an additional $2 million in state aid, and people said, "Well, what are you complaining about? You got an extra $2 million." That because of no increase in the revenue limit, that money goes directly into property tax relief, and not one penny goes into the classroom. And fortunately, there are some media that have picked up on that. This is on page two of the Milwaukee, or page three of the Milwaukee Journal. Sentinel yesterday, "State Aid Boosts Helps Taxes But Not Classrooms. Money Will Flow To Property Tax Relief Instead Of More Funding For Schools." So that, I think, the more that people understand this, understand school funding, and why we keep talking about how difficult our budget's going to be, and how much more difficult it's going to be if the state doesn't change direction and start funneling more money to The second item I want to deal with is the Assembly Republicans talking about educational savings accounts. This is something I've talked about a little bit in the past, and this is something that I think is gaining some momentum around the country and also in Wisconsin. There was a story in the Wisconsin State Journal by Molly Beck. And this, I'm going to read part of what she's talking about, because not a lot of people know what educational savings accounts are. It sounds good, but this is, it's really, it's another, it's another type of voucher that drains, potentially drains money away from public schools. What's known as educational savings account, be set up for parents to pay for tuition, textbooks, and tutoring, according to a proposal in the Assembly Republican Caucus Agenda for 2017. The use of the education accounts in five states, Arizona, Florida, Mississippi, Nevada, and Tennessee, offer clues as how they might work here if lawmakers pursue the idea. In general, parents of eligible children, typically students with disability or low-income students, are those attending schools that don't meet state education standards, receive several thousand dollars from the state to pay education expenses. Parents can use the money to pay for tuition at private schools, books, tutoring, or other costs, including in some cases, extracurricular activities. Hunter Rainey, a policy researcher for the Education Commission of the States, said, "In the states where educational savings account programs exist, parents can't use the money to send children to a different public school district." And it's, I think it's interesting who's involved in the drafting of this legislation. The story quotes Jim Bender, President of School Choice Wisconsin. He said, "Multiple options are being discussed, but lawmakers are waiting to see how much money is available for the 2017-19 state budget. 'We are just starting to meet with folks to discuss ideas, but the real conversations will take place after the election,' Bender said." And you should note that the Department of Public Instruction has not been notified or involved in discussions on drafting this legislation. The draft legislation has been proposed by the American Legislative Exchange Council, which is Alec. They have drafted model legislation all around the country for vouchers and for privatization of public schools. And if you don't know what Alec is, one of their prime goals is the abolishment of public school boards. And also, a group involved in Wisconsin in drafting legislation is the group called, the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty, which is another pro-privatization group. Assembly Education Committee Chair, Representative Jeremy Thiesfeld, "In theory, the accounts provide parents with more flexibility, because the money doesn't just have to be spent on private school tuition, like in the state taxpayer-funded voucher program." And I guess one of the, one of the legislators that lawmakers must ensure money aren't taken from public schools before drafting legislation to create the count. But that raises the question of, where is this money going to come from? There is a comment here from John Bales, who is the Executive Director of Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, which is Michelle's group. And he said, "I think the larger question, if they do make this, is you're still giving up state revenue, which is already limited, and essentially now trying to find a much broader base of students, not just public, but private parochial students. How in the world would we fund that?" And Bales also said, "Educational accounts, if broadly applied, represent further privatization of education." Dan Rossmiller from Wisconsin Association of School Board worried that districts could be on the hook to pay teachers that they don't need if, for example, a large number of students leave from one year to the next. And they talked about its educational savings account being available to parents of private and public school students, but Rossmiller correctly pointed out that public schools can't charge tuition, so how could you use that money to attend a public school? So, spokesman for the governor said, "It's premature to say if the educational savings accounts would be included in Walker's budget proposal." So, that's where we are with that. I think that potentially is a very concerning development, because I think it's a further draining of a limited pile of money for education.
Just the whole term, first thing that came to my mind, and I don't think you have a unique that way, if you're thinking of saving money for college or post-secondary, I should say.
Right.
And that's, again, going after public education. Period.
Well, and it's paying, I mean, tutoring and-
It's tutoring, textbooks, extracurricular activities.
And curricular and textbooks, things that taxpayers shouldn't be paying for.
Yeah.
That's the latest hot thing, though. So I think we're going to be hearing more about that, so. Obviously, our organizations, WASDA and WASB, are very aware of this, and they're very, they're talking to legislators already about potentially harmful effects that this could have on public schools.
I can't even imagine how you could manage that.
Right.
Seriously, and be accountable.
Right.
There is some good news. The, Tony Evers talked about the Department of Public Instruction, what some of their goals are going to be in their budget proposal. And they're proposing some rules to give school districts much more flexibility and funding for summer schools. It would clarify that federal funds can be used to support summer learning and allowing open enrollment students to be counted in summer school membership. It would also propose that, his proposal would improve funding by allowing districts to fully count summer school students for revenue limit purposes, which is critical, as we've talked about. We want to close that achievement gap. We need to get more students in summer school, and that would provide us some additional funding. It would expand access to summer school by increasing the pupil transportation reimbursement rate, and expand dual enrollment opportunities for students to take advanced courses in person or online. So those are some very positive things that Tony Evers will be proposing in the budget that he presents to the governor. Michelle?
Just if I could add, we had a conversation with some of the top folks from the Department of Public Instruction, who actually said some very positive things about the robust summer program at Green Bay area public schools. And this will only help. I think we had- I think we had upward of almost, and I'm looking at Mr. Sarno, more than 10,000 students, I think, participating this summer. It's about half the students. And I think the piece around it is, we anticipate if we can get resource and funding to expand that, because we have a great deal of interest, and obviously, need. And so, collectively, this will be extremely helpful if it moves forward for all of our kids and our community, so.
Okay. And finally, a couple reminders, if people are still interested, and the WSB regional meeting is a week from tomorrow, October 25th. Let Sandy know, I think you're going to be registering people by tomorrow. And I just want to plant the seed in people's mind that next year, at the regional meeting, there will be an election for Regional Director. WSB bylaws limit directors to three consecutive three-year terms. My nine years are up next fall. I think it's important for urban schools to have adequate representation on WSB board, so I would ask people on this board to keep that in mind for next year, if anyone would be interested in running for, because that's, it'll be an open seat next year. And then, one other thing, that Sandy can also register people for November 12th, is the Legislative Advocacy Conference, that's a Saturday, it's a day-long conference in Stevens Point. And on their agenda, our Department of Public Instruction will be talking about teacher shortages and what DPI is doing to help districts with that. There will be a post-election analysis by Charles Franklin from the Marquette Law School Poll, which has been quoted nationwide for months now. And then Todd Berry from the Wisconsin Taxpayers Allowance will be talking, and will be giving a preview of the 2017-19 state budget. And that's always a very good session, if you're interested. And unless anyone has any questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next is district events, if anybody has anything they'd like to announce. I know Lori gave us all postcards about the Equate Music and Art Show and Concert that's coming up on November 22nd. Anything else? Andrew?
We do have the 13th operating this coming weekend at Aldo. Our, the fall event is sponsored by a student organization, and then the spring event is sponsored exclusively by a community organization. So, we'll have about 50, 60 people at Aldo from Friday through, Friday through Sunday for leadership diversity and substance abuse prevention training.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Next, we'll move on to our system reports. And first is teaching and learning, that'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We had robust discussion about the middle school business curriculum, the business management pathway, and the technology management pathway, and there are three action items from that meeting. First, I move that the Middle School Business Education Course Essential Documents is presented and pending the budget process be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Becca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
I move that the Business Management Pathway Course Essential Documents is presented be approved.
Second?
Whoever.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becca?
Aye.
Carried 7-0.
Get ready, Ed.
I'm ready.
All right. I move that the Information Technology Pathway Course Essential Documents is presented and pending the budget process be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Becca?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dor?
Carried 7-0.
And that concludes our report.
All right. Thank you. Next organizational support will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right. We have under Business and Finance, there were no action items for tonight. There were also no action items under the Regular Human Resources section, so although there's a lot happening in both those areas, those are all items that are on the consent agenda. So, I will move the, I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Chris?
Probably won't. The answer next week is fine. And in terms of the Head Start Expansion Program, I guess I'd like a little amplification about that 40% more of the kids are being able to be served under expansion, and what that really means.
At least.
They are coming to the table as you speak.
They've been waiting.
That's right.
I wanted to make it worth your while to wait here this long.
A little shout-out to Sandy.
If you would just amplify and explain that expansion part with the 40, only 40% of the kids, why is it only 40%, and how old is 40%? Thank you, Charlie.
The Office of Head Start first contacted, Office of Head Start first contacted Head Start Programs in April of 16, announcing that President Obama had appropriated a certain amount of money for expansion. And this was in preparation of the new performance standards that came out September 1st, that Head Start Programs were going to be expected to begin the planning and the expansion of services in Head Start Programs across the nation. So, basically, the Office of Head Start wants Head Start to go full day or full year, up to 1,020 hours, not less than eight months in a school year. And the first requirement to programs was that we do it for up to 40%, not 40 or more, but up to 40% of the children enrolled in our program. And only certain programs are eligible to do that. There are many Head Start Programs across the nation that are already expanding services, they're collaborating with 4K programs, they're in daycare centers, so kids are attending in a full-day setting. We were the perfect candidate to apply for this expansion supplement grant, because we are at the very minimum requirement at three-and-a-half-hour class sessions 128 days a year. So, we met several times with district administration with this grant opportunity, and the word was, "Go for it and go big," and I did. And the original, as on the handout, I originally applied for $2.8 million, and that was in June of 16. I met with Mike Stengel, I met with a lot of district administrators. We decided that in order to expand services in Head Start, we would need twice the staff, twice the space. And we know space is such an issue in the district, and we don't really want to continue with the rental, renting our Head Start Learning Center, so I wrote the grant to purchase and renovate a new building, and, which is why the cost is so high. With that, we would be adding an additional four classrooms. So, we would have a total, we would take four existing classrooms, add four classrooms, and have a total of eight classrooms with expanded day services. So, we would follow pretty much the elementary school calendar at six-and-a-half hours a day. And that would be at 170 days a year, so a little bit less than our elementary kids. Our parents very much in favor of that option over full year. They don't want to keep their, you know, they don't want to send their younger ones off on a bus when the young, when the older children are home for the summer. So, after much discussion, they prefer the school year model, and also that we start with just four-year-olds and not our three-year-olds, it in preparation of our four-year-olds for the kindergarten schedule. So, the grant is written to expand services for a total of eight classrooms, for four-year-olds only. In September of 2016 recently, the Office of Head Start sent Head Start Programs a letter saying that we all applied for a little bit more money than what was appropriated. And so, that we were required to reduce our grants by 33% of program operations. And the program operations for my grant was basically personnel and benefits, to add teachers and classroom assistants. So, I was allowed to continue, or to keep the amount in the grant of the startup costs to purchase and renovate a building. We've been told that we'll hear about in December whether we could receive the grant. I'm feeling really confident about this opportunity. I've been in Head Start 32 years and don't recall ever an opportunity like this. I know that President Obama was really behind this before he left office, so it's pretty exciting.
I don't have a grant in front of me. What was the dollar amount you put in for, for a new building?
$2,592,658 is the current grant amount with the startup cost and program operations, and then with an additional $648,245 of non-federal share, the total came to $3,240,103.
It made me premature to ask, and as I asked, are you locked into having a new building? Could you add on to an existing building? Will funds after this year be there for operational expenses of a building? Should we add one? You know, I mean, I think we want to answer it eventually.
Well, we, when we met in April, May, June, we decided to, you know, set three plans, with Plan A being to purchase and renovate, Plan B being the possibility of adding on to an existing building, depending on the amount that we would end up receiving. And then, the final plan being going back to maybe renting up on second floor at the Head Start Learning Center, with our, you know, that would be our least favorite option. But I've been told by the regional office in Chicago that we were the only program in the five-state region that applied for a building, so. I think that's good news.
Yes, yes.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. Very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table. All right, go ahead, Sandy.
Aye. Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Janz?
Aye.
Becca?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 7-0, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned.
Do we have a closed session?
No.